Thank you. It being six o'clock, I hereby call to order the regular meeting of the Ojai Planning Commission for December 6th, 2023. Sherry, would you call the roll, please?
Chair Quilisi.
Here.
Vice Chair Trent.
Here.
Commissioner Murphy.
Here.
Commissioner Bennett has not arrived yet.
Not yet. Okay.
Fashionably late.
Commissioner Murphy, if you'd lead us in the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Lucas, any suggestions on the agenda?
You mean revisions or adjustments?
Any revisions or revisions?
I always have suggestions, but...
No, I should ask that differently. Okay. Then we'll move on to public communications. Time set aside for people to discuss items of city business other than what's on the schedule of the agenda tonight. Is there anyone here present who wishes to speak on an item other than what's on the agenda? Please come forward and tell us who you are and what you think.
What I think. Larry Steingold. My question is, has the Community Development Department contacted OUSD regarding the chaperone land and not the 75 units because I've been led to understand that they can do whatever they want, supposedly. But that leaves us with the rest of the buildings and the rest of the project, which we can certainly influence their thinking in certain ways. So I would hope that you contact them. Thank you.
I've reached out.
Okay.
Have you heard from them?
They have not had a response yet.
How far, how long ago did you reach out to them? No, you don't understand, this is what he did for a living.
I know.
He's retired.
It was last week. I mean, it was, the days run together, maybe Monday or Tuesday of last week.
Okay, well, this is now a week later. Please press them in public, press them in private, because we're gonna get side, you know, they're gonna come forward with stuff and we're gonna go...
All I can do is extend an olive branch.
Not on the apartments, that's a whole nother, but the rest of it?
Okay. Oh, Moss. We're just getting, okay, on four, okay. I have another card for public comment. Leslie Rule, please come forward. And welcome. You're not our city council liaison tonight.
No, I am not. I am just simply a city council member who wanted to respond to Larry Steingold and also potentially to Lucas Seibert to talk about communicating and basically having some sort of dialogue with the Unified School District. The city council is looking to reactivate our 2-2 committee, which is two city council members and two school board members, so that we can discuss on an ongoing basis those things that overlap. I'm hoping that that will be on the agenda, the upcoming agenda. We have been looking to do that for many months, and I think that it will be very soon. They're ready, we're ready, it's just a matter of process. So I wanted to update you folks, as well as Mr. Steingold, on how that might be moving. So olive branch is one thing, but an official 2-2 committee is something else.
So your next action would be to appoint two council members to be on that committee?
That is correct, and we were trying to figure out if we need to have that agendized, you know, what that process is, because, you know, we're a little bit figuring out on process sometimes. Okay, thank you very much, but yes, that will be very, very soon, I would say, certainly by the beginning of the year.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Sherry, is there anyone out there in television land with a raised hand?
No.
Okay. Then we will close public communications and move on to the consent item, the minutes of the regular meeting of November 15th. Recommendation is approved as submitted. Does anyone have a refinement to those minutes?
Nope.
Nope.
I move that we accept the minutes as presented.
I will second.
Very good. Any discussion? Sherry, let's call the roll on item one, please.
Trent?
Yes.
Quilisi?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, item two, a public hearing on an ADU at 311 Park Road. Lucas or Maura?
Thank you.
Take it away.
My turn.
Sorry to interrupt. Can we do the disclosure of site visits?
Oh.
Oh, yeah.
Shame on me, yes. Disclosure of site visits and ex parte contacts. Commissioner Murphy?
I have visited the site and I did not have any ex parte conversation.
Same for me. Familiar with both sites and no ex parte contacts. Thank you. Thank you for the reminder. Go ahead, please.
Thank you again, Chair Quilisi and Commissioners. Design Review Permit 23-014 is regarding the proposed construction of a detached 800-square-feet two-story accessory building that is to be utilized as a single, or excuse me, as an accessory dwelling unit. The project site is approximately 10,906 square feet, and it's developed with an approximately 3,760-square-foot, single-story, single-family residence with an attached garage. The current lot coverage is 34.4 percent. The accessory structure to be utilized as an ADU is proposed to be constructed at the rear of the site, and the proposed lot coverage is 38 percent where a maximum of 35 percent is normally required. The accessory structure, and I'll address that in a moment, the accessory structure is proposed to be located in the rear yard area, approximately 37 feet back from the existing single-family residence, and would be four feet from the rear property line where 25 feet would be required for a non-ADU structure. It's proposed at five feet from the north property line, where four feet would be allowed for an accessory dwelling unit. According to California Government Code Section 65852E, and I want to make a correction to your staff report because I just said "E," where in your staff report it's, I wrote "C2," lowercase "c2" and uppercase "C," but that should be "E." According to this government code section, a statewide exemption ADU up to 800 square feet and not exceeding 16 feet in height requires that lot coverage requirements cannot preclude the creation of an ADU. Therefore, the proposed increase in lot coverage is permitted. A reduction in the required rear yard setback to four feet is also permitted under that code section. The Planning Commission is charged with review of the design review permit for this proposed project pursuant to the Ojai Municipal Code, and the proposed second, the proposed two-story accessory structure is subject to review by the commission, again, pursuant to this code, and however, or and, and however, pursuant to Municipal Code Section 10-2.1709, the ADU would be approved ministerially through the Community Development Department. However, in this case, due to the second story, the planning commission, it's here tonight before you, before the planning commission. The municipal code has standards for design, and this project has been evaluated for adherence to the following design principles. There's context, continuity, scale, and architecture, and we've talked about those in this, with the planning commission previously. Context is with regard to new structures and how they should employ materials, colors, textures, style, building mass, and scale that are compatible with the architectural character and form of surrounding buildings. Continuity is regards, with regards to the streetscape and the setbacks in the surrounding neighborhood. Scale with regards to height transitions between neighboring buildings and architecture that peaks, and I spelled it incorrectly, peaks interest as opposed to monotonous forms of elevations. And thank you, Chair Quilisi, for correcting that again. My spell check should have corrected it. So the building style and materials of the proposed accessory structure matches the primary residence, creating a cohesive design. The proposed accessory structure is located at the rear of the site, behind the main residence. The residence adjacent to the south is comparatively larger and is a two-story, it's also a two-story structure. The residence adjacent to the north is a single-family, or I'm sorry, a single-story structure, however, it grows further into the rear yard of their lot, and the two properties adjacent to the rear are set forward on their lots, leaving the rear yard undeveloped in both those parcels. The proposed structure, again, is situated adjacent to undeveloped portions of those adjacent parcels and has limited windows and is, there is no concern of privacy or view impacts in this situation. The colors and materials of the proposed accessory structure match the existing residence. The walls are gray plaster with white trim, the roof is gray composition shingle and matches the existing residence. Staff is recommending approval of the project as presented. I want to note here that staff received a comment this evening before the meeting from CalHDF, which is California Housing Defense Fund, and it includes, the note that I received includes that a statewide ADU law government code section, here it's 65852.2 and it's E1B, includes that ADUs must be processed ministerially, notwithstanding any local rules and therefore regardless of the project's designed second story, the planning commission approval should not be required. So that's information for you that I received this evening. And with that, again, staff is recommending approval of the project, and I'll turn it over to you.
Questions for staff?
Could you clarify whether parking or how parking would or would not play into this scenario?
Well, the single-family house without an ADU is required two covered parking spaces, and in this situation, those two covered parking spaces aren't being compromised. The ADU does not require covered parking, and because it's...
Or any parking?
It does not require any parking because of its location to...
Transit?
Transit, thank you for that word.
I didn't think that our transit through Ojai was sufficient to be considered a transit hub anywhere. Is that wrong?
I'm going to look to my left.
That's...
Thinking of the city attorney.
Yeah, so Ojai Avenue is the avenue in which we use to create that, I think it's a half-mile buffer, and just about every property in the city qualifies for that exemption.
Is, okay. I recognize that rule, that an ADU does not invoke a parking requirement if you're within a half-mile of a major transit hut, hub. And I'm wondering, because I've read 65852 and deeper into the government code through the citations that are in 65852, and I have concluded there is no major transit hub in the Ojai Valley. We don't have a railroad, we don't have a bus that goes every 15 minutes somewhere, so how do we meet that requirement?
So, to answer that question, I probably would have to look at that government code myself, just to understand, but it was always my understanding that Ojai Avenue was that, Ojai Avenue and Maricopa Highway were the two corridors in which we built that half-mile buffer.
They are, they are... They are major corridors for the city.
I haven't identified that that no longer is in play, and we even had most recently, I want to say, six months ago, we brought revisions forward, and at no point did we identify that that was being taken off the table. Now, in terms of parking being exempt for ADUs, we can always take a closer look at that from a, from a design or from a practical standard, but my understanding is that still exists even today within the city of Ojai's jurisdictional boundaries.
So if that renter has a car, it will be parked on the street?
Not necessarily. They are still required to identify on-site, but they're not required to identify covered parking or garage.
I'm looking at their site map.
So there could be tandem parking in the driveway?
They could be tandem parking within the front yard area, but they can identify parking that would then be on the street.
Any questions, John?
No, not really.
Okay.
Just, I guess on the lot coverage, it's gonna be 38 percent, but that, there's a state exception for that, lot coverage?
Yes, there is, if, if the ADU is a maximum of 800 square feet, and this one is 400 square feet on the first floor and 400 on the second, and is a maximum height of 16 feet, it's called a statewide exemption ADU.
Interesting. Is there any, is there any other exemption besides this statewide exemption? Is there, I mean, is there any other set of rules that an ADU does not have to follow?
Oh, well, yes, I mean, ADUs can be four feet to property lines where another structure could not be, and that doesn't, that's not specifically for the statewide exemption, that's all ADUs, even if they're greater than 800 square feet. That's, that's one. The parking requirement is another.
Yeah, it feels similar to the housing stuff that we had kind of wrestled with a month, month and a half ago. These standards don't get any easier. They continue to strip away our regulations and instead replace them with what the state has identified. Here, there's a very narrow window in which Mara had just spoke to, and that is if it meets a certain height threshold and then a square footage threshold, suddenly lot coverage no longer...
If it's below those limits.
Yeah, so it's, if this happens on this day but not on this day, this gets to happen, right? That's, it's, it's a, but at the same time, the property owner understands that and is willing to comply. When we initially had conversations with them, you might be sharing this, initially having conversations with them, the structure was taller, reduced it in height, recognizing that there was a potential...
That gets within the exemption, then.
Correct. Within this, does it say exemption in the government code? I think it's just a standard.
No, it's, this is very, it's called a statewide exemption ADU. That's the, that's what it's called.
That's the language?
I'm gonna have to look that one up.
Yeah, that's interesting.
All right. Any other questions? Thank you very much for the clarity. Do we have the applicant, oh, I'm sorry, one more?
One quick question. If this building were to be 17 feet, what would happen then?
Well, then it wouldn't comply with the statewide exemption ADU requirements, and then they wouldn't be able to exceed the lot coverage, which was the issue. When it came in, it was 18 feet. It met the size requirement of being 800 square feet maximum, but it was higher than 16, so they had to drop it down.
Okay, thank you.
So then it would, then it could be an ADU, except it would have to be even smaller because it, well, actually, in a regular ADU, it has to be a minimum of 800 square feet.
Have to be smaller than a 400 square foot footprint.
Right.
Right.
Right, right.
400, yeah. Is there any, with the statewide exemption, is there any requirement for lot coverage? Or they could just cover the whole lot?
There is, there is not, there's not a limit.
Other than the setback for fire prevention?
Exactly.
Which is five feet?
Four.
Four feet now.
Which is great, high severity fire. Moves touch each other, that's great.
Okay. Yep, it's the law. Okay, is the applicant here wishing to speak? Please come forward, sir. Identify yourself and give us your thoughts.
My name is Mordechai Nemtsov. I'm the applicant, and just to address the parking concern, I didn't have any intention of getting up to speak, but I just wanted to respond to that. I think I have at least six parking spots outside of the garage currently, so there's plenty of space for cars to park if that is an issue.
Off the street?
Off the street.
Yeah, okay.
Correct.
Anything else you'd like to tell us about the project?
I'd like to say thank you. Yeah, we tried to comply with anything that was coming at us, and we're here to just follow the rules and live within that limit.
Okay. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else here present who wishes to speak on item two? Sherry, how about out there in the television land?
No, there is not.
All right. Then we will close the public comment portion of this public hearing and come back just to the commission for deliberation. Any initial thoughts?
Well, it doesn't sound to me as though we really have any choice about this. Per the HDF, even the second story is not really something that we can address.
Opine on.
Opine on, yes, so...
Hold on, can I just respond to that?
Sure.
That's an opinion piece by a third-party nonprofit. It hasn't been vetted through the attorney's office or through staff.
Okay.
Just so you know.
Thank you.
And they're using words like "should," not "shall," so.
Okay, and the fact that our staff is recommending approval makes me feel like this is a fairly straightforward project that we can approve.
Yeah, I did look at the neighborhood, and there's other two stories in the general vicinity, so it's not out of character for that neighborhood.
I was worried about it. When I drove by, you can't see the backyard or how this will impact the neighbors, so I was glad to hear Maura indicate that it wasn't going to be right on top of somebody else's structure.
That was my biggest concern, you know?
Yeah.
Okay, I, I don't see any, any problems with the project. It looks like it meets all of the city's requirements, which might be even more restrictive than, than the state requirements. I don't know, but if it's under the state exemption, and I see no problem with a, with a two-story ADU, then I don't have a problem with the project. I would, I would ask, however, to look at the resolution itself, that's Attachment A, page 2, the third recital subsection C. I don't think we need that paragraph in, in the resolution. It looks to me like the proposal is categorically exempt already under, under sub-paragraph A there.
Yes.
And so I'd like to see sub-paragraph C deleted.
Is that here?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Can I just read it? It states, "The Planning Commission, based upon the findings set forth above," which talks about the exemption, "hereby finds a notice of exemption for this project has been prepared in compliance with CEQA." That would basically be that we, that staff prepares the notice of exemption and then files that with the county.
I agree. Have you done so?
We don't do that until after the project's been approved. So what happens is it gives us...
And if the project is approved, then you will file a notice of exemption.
Correct, an NOE. We can take that out, it's not required.
Could we say "will be prepared and submitted"?
Yeah, because it says that.
Oh, hereby finds, has been prepared, will be prepared. I think that's a better squishy language.
Will be prepared?
Yes.
That works for me. Other than that, we've heard initial thoughts, any final thoughts?
Just a quick question, this would apply for affordable housing under HCD, correct?
Correct. All ADUs qualify.
Yeah, they, like, they are, they are affordable by mandate.
Right, we just don't know what income level it would qualify under.
Doesn't matter. It's affordable at some level by mandate.
Well, we have to be careful, because if we go into the lower, low and lower categories, then there has to be some justification for it, meaning I have to show some, some sort of carrot that identifies that it fits with, within that category.
You're right, an ADU is affordable at moderate level by mandate.
Moderate, exactly. As a minimum, it fits, if you go anything beyond that, you've got to show your homework.
Beyond that, it depends on the rent and the income and all that stuff.
Yep.
Okay. Any final thoughts?
No, I think I would like to move approval of this ADU request, item two.
The resolution as amended?
As amended.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Very good. Any discussion? All right, Sherry, call the roll on item two, the resolution as amended.
Murphy?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Quilisi?
Yes. Work with staff.
There you go.
All right, item three, a concept review for a vacant parcel at 220 Bryant Street.
Thank you again, Chair Quilisi.
Make it away, staff.
Thank you. So this is a concept review for development of a 15,250-square-feet, single-story, light industrial building on a 43,560-square-feet vacant parcel located at 220 Bryant Street. The Planning Commission may provide the property owner, applicant, representative, whoever is here this evening or even not here, with comments and feedback. No decision on this concept review item is going to be, will be made tonight at this meeting. The structure provides for a potential of six separate tenant spaces. Each unit provides approximately 500 square feet for storage in a mezzanine and a roll-up door for vehicular or vehicle entrance and parking. The ceilings are sloped such that the ceiling height in the mezzanine slopes from eight and a half to eight feet, and the site includes 36 parking spaces. Based on square footage and use, 31 spaces would be required, so they comply with their parking requirement. The subject site is located on the east side of Bryant Street. The site is vacant and is without curb, gutter, and sidewalks currently. The property is surrounded by a fence on all sides except for the rear, and the site is currently being utilized as a storage yard. This site was part of a recent lot line adjustment that the Planning Commission reviewed, and it involved the site adjacent to the rear, and the lot line was adjusted to make the two existing parcels similar in area. The road and, or there's a road and utility easement that's bordering the site to the north, and the easement serves as access to the parcel adjacent to the rear. Concerns were raised at the Planning Commission hearing for that lot line adjustment regarding the potential of underground tanks and tank leakage on the site. The specific concern was that the tanks may lie beneath the proposed lot line to where it was being adjusted. There was, there was review of that, and the equipment and methods that were used to survey the site did not detect reactions from potential underground storage tanks within 10 feet of the proposed now current lot line. So there, the site is within the Bryant Industrial Area Plan, which evaluates improvements to roadways and intersections while projecting total build-out within the required maximum floor area ratio. There was a question before the meeting about the FAR, which in this zone is 35 percent, however, within the Bryant... However, within the Bryant Industrial Area Plan, the FAR can be 45 percent. So all formal submittals of development in this area are evaluated against this Bryant Industrial Area Plan. The front and rear elevations for this project includes a split-face CMU block wall between smooth textured plastered finish sections. And design details include the roof of the split-face CMU block wall section sloping downward to provide a visible comp shingle roofing tile. The sloping roofs are proposed to support photovoltaic solar panels. The base of the plaster finish section includes fluted split-face CMU block. And there are seven sections in total on this elevation. The front elevation includes coiling metal warehouse doors for the vehicular entrance and an aluminum-framed glass storefront system for pedestrian access. The storefronts are framed by smooth concrete columns supporting a steel trellis. The storefronts are within the plaster finish sections and there are four of these sections. The coiling metal warehouse doors are within the split-face CMU block wall sections, of which there are three. The landscape plan is, has not, or a landscape plan has not been submitted. However, along with a lighting plan that also has not been submitted, these things would be required when the project is formally submitted for planning commission review of a design review permit. Also, the cost of the site improvements hasn't been determined at this time. However, development exceeding $300,000 requires compliance with public arts program and the applicant has already indicated that a location for public art may be installed on the west side of the building that you're seeing in your plans today. The conceptual review offers the commission as well as the community with an opportunity to review and comment on this, on a proposed project and in this situation, this proposed light industrial building, without taking any action. And a more detailed submittal would be required for planning commission review and consideration of a design review permit. We do have the applicant here and if you have any questions of staff, I'm happy to answer any questions I may or I can.
Questions for staff? No, no.
When we reviewed the property split last year, as I recall, we only required checking for those oil canisters within 10 feet of the property line. So the rest of this property has not been checked to see whether or not there's oil canisters buried.
Nothing has been submitted. So I'd like to say, so to our knowledge, no.
The answer is, you're correct.
Thank you.
That was the parameters in which we operated under and that was the third party that connected the...
We were concerned strictly about the lot line at that point.
Well, I'm still worried about the canisters, but...
Oh, I agree. It's a topic that has not been taken up yet.
Yes.
Could I just add that we think at this point that the project might need an initial study under CEQA to determine if there's any environmental, possible environmental effects from the project? So that question might get answered in that process and if it doesn't, when you deliberate on the project, when it comes forward, you will also have the chance to impose conditions on the project.
Thank you.
Such as further exploration?
Yes.
Okay. I did, I had just one question and that's regarding public art. I may have misread or misunderstood the code. I thought public art was required for commercial projects, not for manufacturing projects. Did I miss that?
Let me look at the code real quick. But I am almost certain that it includes...
Includes manufacturing projects?
Yes.
And he thinks that's not residential.
I'm sorry?
Oh, I was thinking, my search...
It excludes residential, yes, I agree.
Right.
Okay. All right, then, having clarified whatever we need to with staff, let's hear from the applicant. Please come forward and tell us who you are and what you think.
Well, greetings, commissioners and staff. My name is Neil Subick. I'm the architect for the project and representing the ownership, Amlap Circle Properties. And it seems, it's a pretty straightforward light industrial building on a one-acre site. We did, I believe it was in around 2007, we did a very similar building around the corner, down the street, at 420 Bryant Circle. And that's, again, six units, 18,000 feet, 35 percent floor area ratio.
It looks a lot like things I've seen on Bryant Circle, having walked that property.
Very...
Very similar.
Typical of the area and that other property's very successful. It's got six bays in it right now. They've got three tenants. One's of, like a food manufacturing, they do granola, natural products. And there's a soundstage in it. And there's another storage unit, somebody storing vehicles or whatnot in it. We have done a number of these different projects for this particular client. We did four buildings out in Santa Paula on Calavo Street. CMU block construction with stuccoed elements. The storefront, very, very similar. This one's actually much more ornate than what we did out in Santa Paula. We have one under construction on Donlin Street down in Ventura.
Oh, yeah.
It's about 13,000 feet, again, six units. Seems to be a constant there. We're trying to add, you know, a lot of thought into this. We're putting, on this particular building, we're putting sloped roof elements in to pick up the ability to put photovoltaic systems in. Within the units, we've got, they're demised off into six spaces. Six roll-up doors, six aluminum storefront entrances, six restrooms. There's no office or anything proposed inside, storage mezzanine.
Anything you want with open floor space.
Well, the...
You're not walling in offices.
No, the municipal code allows, I believe up to 20 percent. Could be office, but we don't build office and the majority of the units that we have, nobody wants it or needs it. They never get built out, you know. But that's currently, as the tenants roll in and roll out, somebody could want and need, but they would be subject to the permit process.
The leasehold improvement.
Exactly. Within each unit, there's an electrical closet, electrical cabinet. I guess it's a closet where the photovoltaic transfer switch and batteries and stuff would stand alone, specific to that tenant. So we're not going to try to do a whole system for the whole building and then divvy up the cost. It's a standalone, every unit is separately metered electrically and the photovoltaic system would stand alone with that tenant. There's no natural gas to the building. The units will be heated and cooled, which we discovered on the Bryant Circle property. When we built it, it was non-conditioned and the tenants in Ojai proper, they got to have their cooling, they got to have their heating. So we've learned our lessons from that. In this particular building, we're accounting for heating and cooling, which supports the photovoltaic systems to help offset the energy cost. So very well-thought-out project and it should be a real success and an asset to the community.
Go ahead, Judy.
What, are there limits on what kind of businesses you would expect or be able to rent to, or your client, based on the zoning?
There are uses that are permitted within the zone, yes. They're limited. Looks like Lucas might be opening up that section of the code. And we can tell you what the uses are under the...
Remember the land use tables?
Yes, yes.
Yes, the M1 zone is very specific as to what uses are allowed in it.
Jamie!
And then, so we follow the code allowance.
Okay.
And that's very typical of the product that we construct.
So your basic construction, though, is CMU and in places you have stucco over the CMU?
So, something else we learned from the Bryant Circle project was that building was CMU 100 percent. CMU is concrete masonry units. They're this eight-by-eight-by-16 concrete block and they're filled with rebar and concrete grout, grouted solid. They have a certain R value, which is energy, heat gain and heat loss.
Yep.
Which is typically not sufficient to provide the correct R value for a heated and cooled building with an envelope. It's called an environmental envelope for the interior of the space. So in this particular building, my intent is to actually stick-frame the building, probably with wood or metal, heavy gauge metal exterior walls, and then apply exterior stucco and block veneer onto it to get that appearance, the look. The, it's much more durable where I've used the split-face block and the base of the building. It can be abused and hit and weathered very well. That's the beauty of that product. But my reason for going with the stick-frame on the outside of the structure of the building, I can insulate it and I can get my required...
Do bats or foam and get the R value you need.
Exactly. So we've learned from the past, knowing that in Ojai, the buildings want to be heated and cooled. And so that's the intent right now. So we're going, if we get the nod from you guys tonight, we'll proceed with the formal application and take it down the road with having structural engineer look at it and our civil and our landscape for site.
So it's basically water metal frame. The CMU is for appearance, the stucco is for appearance.
Correct. And we'll get our R values out of the building. And it'll be a much lighter building as well. CMU tends to be heavy and seismically needs a lot more structure involved, interior, to support it. So this could be a better product.
So it's a veneer, yeah. Okay, John?
I'm sorry to come in late. I wanted to find out if you...
I'm sorry.
If you found early in the development of the project that you had tenants that wanted two spaces rather than one, is, does that, is that easier or harder to do with the construction technique you're using?
Very simple to do. The walls that split the units up are metal stud and they're, I mean, they're...
And drywall.
And drywall, with insulation for sound transmission. And we do that in our, my client in their other buildings do that regularly. So they can, they can take 22500 square foot bays. If you have a 5,000 square foot tenant, you either remove the entire wall or you create the openings to transition between the two. It's one solid slab, one level, the concrete slab ungrade.
So you're not looking at those as sheer walls?
No, they are not sheer walls. There'll be some steel columns in the very center of it, on the grid line, the structural grid line. And back in the rear where the, where the storage mezzanine and toilet rooms are, there probably will be some shear back in there. But nothing that would be opened up anyway if there were multiple spaces combined.
Just a quick question, you're, the back of the building, the building that's the, I guess it's on the south side, southeast?
South side.
South?
With the five-foot setback?
Yes, yeah.
Or the zero lot line setback?
Yeah, where it's like a zero, it looks like...
Okay, yeah, that's right on property line?
Right on property line?
Yeah. And there's a grade differential there that's...
Right.
It's probably going to be about five feet by the time we grade and drop our site down to get our accessible, you know, levels out so that you can come onto our site and get to the rear within a 2 percent differential.
So that's on the south side, you're going to drop it down five feet, you said?
Yeah, it's actually on the, I think it's on the east side where that zero lot line occurs.
Southeast.
Yeah. Yes.
That looks like zero lot line to the southeast, to the east side, not the south. It looks like there's four or five feet on the south.
Yeah, that's on the east side where there's zero. You're right, yeah, this is on the south. There's a little bit of space there.
Yeah, so it's just, it's the width of the building, which is 60 feet, and that is going to be at zero lot line. And then the parking that heads into that, that continues kind of north along that east property line, that is, it's going to have landscape buffer across there as it joins the adjacent lot.
I see that.
And the adjacent lot remains undeveloped. It's still used for a service yard and Adamson's towing, I believe, is in there.
And then you're aware of the proposal for the other property in the south?
Correct.
Okay, and then you're aware that that's going to be used as a driveway?
Right. And that was actually kind of what, what helped me to decide to put the building five feet off our property line, along that south, the entire south.
Gotcha.
So we got a little bit more buffer in there.
Right.
And we can get some, you know, some landscaping.
Well, that's what I was going to ask, because I noticed you didn't have any trees or anything and I was just curious if you were going to...
I'm going to let the landscape architect deal with what to put in there, but there is definitely the ability to provide some buffer in there.
Okay.
And so I think that'll help both projects.
Yeah. But you're not, you're not planting a wall or a fence or anything along the south side?
There will be...
I see a line with dashes and X's. I don't know what that means.
Okay, so depending on what our grade, our floor elevation is compared to where their driveway is, or their, we call it a road bed going in, it's probably going to be two or three feet of difference because we are dropping ours quite a bit. Right now, there's quite a bit of an embankment that drops down onto that existing dirt access road. So as we drop our building down and grade, that differential gets less, but there's still going to be something there.
Gets more at the north side.
It increases, but my rough calculations are it's about three feet. So there could be a slight retaining wall on the property line at the rear. We got to let the civil engineers figure that out once we get to it, but...
Same on the north side, I would guess, then.
Yeah, of our property?
Yeah.
There's going to be grading definitely...
There's a fence there now, but...
Again, what I'm trying to do is retain that row of peppers. Those California pepper trees up there. If we can get our property, our parking lot graded, you know, maxed out as it can be from a slope up to an embankment that goes to the existing asphalt driveway to the Adamson's rear lot, I think we might be successful with that. But I got to get to the next step to be able to determine that. So a lot of thoughts gone into this and a lot of desires that we'd like to try to achieve.
I'm sorry if you've covered this previously, but who do you see the prime tenants for this to be in terms of categories of users?
Well, I mean, the M1 zone is, it's got, it's got quite a few, it's got a big variety of potential tenants in it. It's a good zone to be in, which, that's what was of great interest to my client when they purchased this property. I, so, kind of stepping back a little bit. We did, and I believe it was in 2006 or '07, we did 420 Bryant Circle, which is down around the corner. It's an 18,000 square foot, six-unit industrial building in the M1 zone as well. And it's had a variety of different tenants in there. One of them... One of them was an ex oil exploration company where they had a bunch of flat files full of topog- or topographic data for for oil exploration. Right now, it's a it's a health food manufacturing company and a few of the units, excuse me, units. There's a sound stage in it right now in one of the units. And so it's it's gonna be wide open to what what's allowed within the M one zone.
You and your client see it occupied by active employers. I guess the question.
Absolutely.
Yeah, the question, the question is obviously you see demand. That demand will be job generative, I assume.
Mm-hmm, that is.
So it's fulfilling the objective of the whole development of that area.
So comments that my client has made when he gets interested in one of these parcels is he wants to keep jobs in Ojai, keep the traffic from having, people from having to drive down to, you know, out of the city to go to go to work. If they can bring businesses and keep them in Ojai, it's part of his goal for the community. And so he's more than happy to to construct these buildings that are are there for small businesses to to grow in. And yes, they can be demised, opened up, built from twenty-five, you know, twenty-five hundred square foot increments. And so it kind of ebbs and flows as as time goes by with the different tenants.
Yeah.
Allows for growth.
Yeah. I like that open architecture. It's nice.
On the east end of the building, which is at zero lot line, you said there will be a five foot differentiation approximately. Do you build a retaining wall and is that on the adjacent property or how does that work?
So the the building, well, okay, stepping back to the the stick frame portion of the building, when we had that conversation, that particular wall is gonna be block. It will be a retaining wall up this high or ever, or this high, or however it ends up. And then we'll just build the CMU block the full height of that particular wall. That will be definitely a a block wall.
Okay.
And the lower portion will be retaining of the soil behind it. And and you know, you don't know what's gonna happen eventually on that back parcel. That grading could drop down below our floor level. You you never know until something comes comes before you for review.
Okay, so in other words, your cement wall, block wall is here and their property, their level of soil comes up.
Correct.
It's your building at five feet.
Dirt on your wall.
There'll be dirt against the wall, correct. Yeah.
Got it.
Yeah, and that that is expected. We just waterproof it and.
Yeah, that was my next question. How do you do that?
Well, so the four twenty Bryant Circle project, it's probably got twelve or fourteen feet of retaining. It's a big, big block wall and it's it's been there for yeah, special attention is given to the waterproofing of those walls. Let me just say that. We don't want a weepy wall.
You you heard the city attorney mention Sequa before. I'm not sure how much you know of the provenance of the property or its prior uses, but but we have had comments here when discussing other aspects of this property and concerns that there might be underground pollution that would be leaking to the south and to the southwest toward the creek.
So.
Does, what what does that do to your to your calculation?
So from those conversations, and and I know that those were coming up at the time because we were involved at that time before the sale actually occurred.
Okay.
Um, early on during the the, I guess you guys are probably already reviewing the the lot line adjustment, but I don't have the particulars in front of me, but there was some additional investigation that had occurred at the time. Um, I don't know the particulars about it right now and to what degree those investigations were done, but it looked as though if there was something that had been on the site, it was in the back portion of the whole, the property as a whole, back where the metal buildings are, the the auto repair buildings.
To the to the east of this parcel, you're saying?
And it's far away, I'm gonna have to table that for right now, but we can readdress it.
A conversation for another day.
Right, during our 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 formal review, we'll definitely bring that back onto the, you know, back to the table and put put it all, put, you know, put to ease, so.
Okay.
Because my client did not want to purchase a dirty site, so he made some very clear decisions and investigations into the likelihood of this property having any any contamination on it. He would not have purchased it if that had been the case.
You're covering most of it with impervious surface anyway.
We will be, yeah, most of the, most of it's gonna be covered. We're, we are leaving, you know, some landscape area out against Bryant Street for hopefully we can get enough retention area out of that and filtration through bioswales and whatnot. But if we have to put stuff under the app, the asphalt cap for water retention, so be it. We've done it before, so it's it's the norm nowadays.
Yeah, we we noticed with another project that's, you know, the other one that's close here, there's the soil was very dense and it wasn't draining properly.
Right.
So have you guys?
I would imagine this will be the same. We actually have the soils report, soils, geotechnical report is in preparation right now. It's it's been, the the borings have been done on site and they're they're finalizing the report. So we'll be able to hand that to our civil engineer when we move forward.
Okay, cool.
And and it'll it'll move along through the process.
Yeah, and and I think one of the other things they were looking at was rainwater capture and, you know, harvesting the rainwater.
Indeed.
Yep, yep.
Some creative ways to do it nowadays.
And yeah, the people that own the parcel just to your south had to do through, do that.
I I watched the 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 commission meeting last time and I I saw the
Very good.
Their civil engineer addressed that, so.
All right.
I would just like to say that I appreciate the fact that you've given some architectural texture to this build, to this project. I really like the various frontages.
We don't want a long building. It's boring.
Ojai doesn't want that either.
It's not significantly more to break it up and make it look interesting.
A question for staff. The height limitation in M one is thirty or thirty-five feet, is that right?
One moment. Thirty-five feet?
Thirty-five, okay. And you're proposing twenty-four?
Twenty-four?
Around twenty-four.
I think the Condor facility is about the same, I think, twenty-four roughly.
Yeah, I was just curious because the sloped roof that you have is not very sloped. And and that, of course, deals with the efficiency of your photovoltaic system.
That's exactly right.
But you have, you you have room to tilt it more if you wish.
Right. And so that.
Means taller walls.
Yeah.
More cost.
Yeah, structurally, I'd have to look back at why I set the plate height on those where I did. It had some some justification for it, but I I appreciate you recognizing that. That's that's great.
Okay, any other questions for the applicant?
Uh, lighting, did you, you have lighting in here?
We'll do a photovoltaic, excuse me, a a photo overlay of the the site.
Photometric survey, yeah.
It'll be, it'll be lit correctly and 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 Ojai's a dark city, correct?
Yes.
Yes, dark sky city, yeah.
Dark sky, so that's that's a matter of the the parking lot lighting going off at a certain time? Or is it still lit?
It's more downward.
Okay, it's it's.
You're directing the light than anything else.
Got it. I'll refresh my my education in that matter.
Pull up the code and search on dark sky.
Yep, exactly.
That'll do it. Anything more here? Final thoughts? We.
I like it.
Okay, I appreciate that.
I I think it it looks like the sort of thing that the commission was hoping would happen in empty spaces anywhere in the area.
In the M one zone.
To bring in more light industrial and manufacturing. I think the building looks great. It looks like good size units and and the sizing of the units is flexible. So I I think you're doing fine.
Excellent. I appreciate the.
Do some more.
Excellent, all right.
Uh, John, Jamie?
Yeah, I I just, I echo those comments. I like the the open idea and you're right, I've seen this exact same sort of thing in Bryant, in that area. And there's, you know, it's it's nice because you can use it for a wide variety of different types of businesses, which is really, which is really nice. And then, yeah, I'd I'd just like to see some stuff in the plans related to the architecture, I'm sorry, to the landscaping on the south side. You know, looking at the, obviously, the rainwater capture system that you're thinking of doing and 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 how the how the rainwater will drain through this property. And then, yeah, that's that's, I think one of my concerns is just the infrastructure around Bryant. I mean, obviously, where it's getting denser, we're putting more stuff there. There's gonna be more traffic coming in and out of there. So anything we can do, I like how you have a sidewalk here. Anything we can do with lighting along the street too, it's very dark at night there. I think would be helpful.
Yeah, we're we're about keeping it secure as well. So we did widen up that driveway, the curb cut wider than the the twenty-five foot drive, or I think we're at twenty-seven foot interior drive. So we widened that up so we could easily get in and out with any, you know, heavy vehicles.
Right, right, it's nice.
And of course.
Fire department likes twenty-seven feet.
Yeah, yeah. Well, we all do. It gives elbow room. And of course, we're doing the sidewalks, improved curb and gutter and whatnot across the front of that property, so that that should uh, be a, for whatever distance it is, it's a good benefit for 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 the the street frontage.
Yeah, that'll help. Okay. If it if it comes to the point that public art is required for this project, and I'm, I'll wait to hear from staff on that, you will probably get tied up with the Arts Commission as well.
We did have to provide it and dealt with it accordingly on the four twenty Bryant Circle project. So we do have art on that building and, yeah, we're familiar with it. So it's not not a surprise. It's expected, so.
And and is the the property owners that are to the south, there there looks like they're, you know, they've got a active project going on right now? Have you, are they aware of you guys? You're aware of them, obviously.
Um, I don't know that that they're aware of us. We certainly aren't. There's not a, you know, adversarial.
No, not at all. I just.
Position at all.
Hopefully we can have open dialogue between the two.
We're gonna have open dialogue and we're gonna.
Have some shared spaces.
We're gonna coordinate that.
And if things work out, you'll have simultaneous construction.
Right, yeah. We could very well.
And you're gonna have the same sort of soil issues and drainage problems.
Right, so we're gonna.
Yeah, they probably have some good data for you.
Yeah.
Plus, when the underground survey was done along the lot line adjustment line, as I recall, we were we were hoping to to look to the depths where underground tanks might be. And the result that we got back was they could only go down two feet and they hit clay or something. Yeah, that soil's pretty dense.
Interesting. So if there was any.
So you might you might want to look back at that case and the paperwork that came with it.
Okay.
I don't know if that would have any effect on your construction.
Yeah.
But you may not have a lot of dirt above the hardpan where you're starting to build.
Thanks for that. Yeah.
Better to know now.
The project we have going on down down at Ventura, it had been dry for a decade, you know, with with lack of rain, with the drought and all. And well, last last year, we had a lot of rain and we had, ended up having, you know, water issues.
Yeah.
Under site. It it was quite an involved process to, during the grading, the over excavation process, so. This one will be clay, I guess.
Do a little mud grading, a little, yep.
Okay, all right.
Any last thoughts, Jamie?
Um, I thank you and your owner of the property for putting in the articulation and surface changes on the building, which will allow it to be more things than had you just had a Butler Building style.
No, it's something we all be proud of.
Terrific. Anything else you want to ask of the commission?
Um, if I get a nod tonight that we're okay to to proceed with the project, it sounds like we do. And I'm gonna get going on preparing the formal application for design review right away.
I'm nodding.
Chair, shall we take public comment before?
Yeah, that's probably good.
Yes, now that we're done with the applicant, we should have, we should have public comment if anyone wishes to. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone here present who wishes to comment on item three? Jerry, anyone out there?
No.
Okay. Then we'll have dispensed with that. And we're not making any decisions.
No.
We've given the applicant some feedback. I say move on to item four. Proposed revisions to the movable tiny homes ordinance. Excuse me, movable tiny houses ordinance. Is Kyla here?
She is not, but I am here.
All right.
So I'll present on it.
I met Kyla. She's much better looking.
Well, I don't take that as offense. Okay, so, good evening, commissioners. My name is Lucas Seibert, Community Development Director for the City of Ojai. The item you have tonight before you is, it's referred to as proposed revisions, but really this is a discussion piece. Informational for us to provide you information and for us to have kind of a dialogue, obviously opening it up for public comment and discussion as well. There is no decisions being made tonight. We're not asking for you to make any decisions. Instead, we're asking for input in terms of what's been provided through, I don't want to call it a term sheet. It's probably more of a, hey, we went through and redlined some of the pieces of the code based on what had been provided through council discussion back in September. To to give this commission and anybody listening and and here in the audience tonight, tiny homes has been on the on the docket for discussion. This has come before planning commission in previous meetings. The only person I think that was on the commission when it was brought forward was Chair Qualisi at the time. Regardless, this community has been well versed in this discussion piece. And it has evolved since it was first kind of introduced in two thousand and sixteen, maybe, two thousand and fifteen, I think is really when the tiny home movement kind of started to to grab some legs. And a lot of different communities were looking at it and trying to figure out and wrap their head around how it functions because it really, tiny home is is typically on chassis, which then means it's a trailer, right? So then how do you address that and ensure that there's safe parameters and but also kind of have a new kind of unique feel to it as maybe an ADU plus, right? So.
Or in this case, more an ADU minus.
Uh, well, I.
Very small.
It is, okay, that's actually a good point. If you look at it from a square footage standpoint, it's probably a bite of what an ADU would typically be, right? You're putting all the pieces kind of on top of each other, right? And and really being creative, kind of like what RVs and other things are 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 trying to do as well. You're trying to make and maximize the most of the space, right, overlapping in some circumstances, which is very true for these tiny homes. In doing that, city council adopted a pilot program for two years. In two thousand and twenty-one, look, look to sunset in November of this year. It has since sunset, but before we did that, before it happened, we got feedback from city council. And when we got feedback from city council, it was, hey, do you want to continue this pilot program? If you do, we need some direction. If you don't, then it'll just sunset and that'll be the end of it. Um, council said, no, we want to continue this. Staff, can you go back and look at, you know, X, Y, and Z, which is kind of the stuff that we have for discussion tonight? And then, once you do that, let's bring it to planning commission and see and just run it through. And then, once you do that, let's bring it to planning commission and see, and just run it through the, the gambit of review, which anytime that you're looking at a revision to the code, um, it not only requires city council, obviously, to make that determination, but as a legislative action through Title Ten, which is zoning law, requires planning commission to, um, provide a recommendation. This isn't meant to be one meeting, maybe not even two. Uh, we have the full floor to kind of take, and when I say we, I mean the commission, uh, at, at discretion, um, has full floor to, to provide recommendations to city council. I have a PowerPoint and I have some information to go through, I can, let me just talk through some of the things that came forward from city council standpoint, and then we can go into the PowerPoint. And the PowerPoint really kind of focuses on a couple of, um, sites and some of the stuff that, some of the feedback we received from, from, from city council. So, from city council standpoint and the feedback we got when we took this forward, when staff took this forward as kind of a check-in in September, they had asked for staff to look at the removal of barriers. Um, and what that basically means is when, when I presented this to city council, I said, hey, look, in the last two years during this pilot program, the pilot program allowed for up to ten each year, up to ten tiny homes to be cited, um, in the city of Ojai. In the two years, we've had two. Which means that in each of those years, there's been about a ten percent, um, rate of citing versus, uh, what I think they were expecting, a lot more.
Are there, are there in fact two movable tiny homes on foundations in the city now?
On chassis.
Chassis.
On chassis.
On chassis?
In the city.
Skirted then?
Correct, skirted and they've got the, they have all the parameters that are identified here, they've got the, yeah. But we also had individuals coming in and asking and inquiring. And once we gave them the laundry list of, of things that they shall do and then things that they shall provide, it became daunting to them, where they simply looked at it and said, no, thanks, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna pursue this. It kind of reminded me of ADUs in the early two thousands, when someone would come to the counter and they would say, hey, I'm thinking about doing a granny flat. And we'd say, what, do you mean like a, an accessory dwelling unit? And they'd say, yeah, that's what I wanna do. Most cities said, it's a conditional use permit. And they would say, oh, what's that require? Requires twenty-five hundred dollar deposit, there's, there's money involved, there's a planning commission hearing, it's discretionary. And their eyes just kind of glossed over, they said, never mind, they walk away, right? That's kind of what's been happening and it feels kind of similar to what was happening about twenty years ago with ADUs. The barriers here are a little bit different because it is something that's different than what an ADU, uh, provided. ADU is ground-up construction, right? Like, you knew what it was going to be, it's either attached to the home or it wasn't. Simple. This one.
New, yeah.
Yeah, this one, not the same. It has some different standards that HCDs weighed in on through, um, through guidance back in two thousand sixteen, seventeen, um, and because of that guidance, it's kind of framed how each city has, uh, kind of reacted to, um, addressing the situation. So it, it has been kind of interesting looking at some of these barriers, because when we've had both of these, um, come forward, the very first one that came forward was kind of a pioneer and it's, and it's right. And the individual that came forward actually presented me with a PowerPoint before he went forward with final review and before I went out and did the final, um, inspection, to show how cumbersome the process has been, and for an hour, he went through a PowerPoint presentation with me and showed me each and every step that he had to go through. And for something like that, when we're talking about a building that's been prefabbed and it's already going through a manufacturer and it's being inspected, um, third party, well, not third party, but through ANSI specifications, it, it reminded me that this is meant to be simple. And that was kind of the understanding, I think, the, the, um, I would say the understanding that, that the council at the time had, is let's find a way in which we can make this happen. Not saying that it's an ADU and a tiny home, the two of them are one or the other, it's either this or that. So you've got a menu of options and we've used that and even gotten credit through, um, through a housing element, through HCD, they recognize the efforts that we're going through. And then we've, we've recognized that there's opportunities here as well, and I think the council does as well. And that's reflected in, I would say, this first blush look at, at getting rid of some of that red tape. And in doing that, so that's the first piece, removal of barriers. The second piece is, um, something that I hadn't anticipated, but council is, in their wisdom, is looking beyond just what the, what this building, what this site, um, the sighting of these tiny homes could do. And that is looking at other zones, other uses that could potentially occupy these and in what context does that mean? So, the example that we're using in this context and what I'll show in some, in the PowerPoint, is faith-based organizations. So, those range in size from an acre to a hundred and fifty acres, roughly. These are, it's a broad stroke. And in doing that, we, staff has looked at it from the standpoint of, how can we, how can we provide parameters and standards that seem applicable and yet aren't so stringent that someone looks at it and says, no, thank you? But also holds true to really what Ojai already encompasses and the use itself and the structure itself. If it's visible, that it is, it is not seen as an eyesore, but something that's championed throughout the neighborhood. And I would say throughout the city, for that matter. So that's kind of baked into this as well. Into the, to the standards that we're looking at, so that's the second piece, there's four, there's basically four tiers here, um, from, direction from council at that meeting. The third piece is looking at other matrix other than the ANSI standards. And staff has kind of done a precursor review of that. And the ANSI standards is the standard for tiny homes. We're not seeing a one-off to say, oh, you could use building standards. I've already talked to our building official and he's made it pretty clear, he's like, we follow the ANSI standards, there's no, I, I'm not familiar with the standards that we would be following at this point. Now, that's not to say that we couldn't branch off and address that, but I, I think there needs to be more work done, um, before I really present something to say, hey, we could do this, but just recognize by doing that, there's pros and cons to it. I haven't done that deep dive yet. So on the surface, ANSI standards seem to be the champion moving, moving forward as it relates to, to how these are built from the ground up and then from the ground up moved on to specific sites. The last one is is a look at the matrix. And matrix is really code for saying, look at the standards, what standards do we have in our pocket? What are those zoning standards? Height, right, right, the pieces to the puzzle, the height, the lot coverage, floor area, number of stories. What, what pieces to that puzzle could we apply potentially, um, as a discussion piece? That would in a certain degree provides for some understanding of, of, of how these buildings and tiny homes are cited on a, on a structure that is kind of equal and can be addressed not only within the residential neighborhoods that we've already got, but beyond. And beyond is the, the discussion piece for tonight, which is delving into the PL zones, those public, uh, use zones and the IR one and IR three, um, zones. Each of those zones, uh, and I'll have to admit, in the beginning, I thought when we were looking at, um, faith-based organizational sites, we were only gonna be looking at PL. But when you start doing the research, you start realizing, hold on, there's other zones that also have faith-based. So IR one and IR three both have, um, faith-based uses. So because of that, we've included IR one and IR three. But not saying that PL, IR one and IR three, this is, this is all proposed, up for discussion. That's one piece. The second piece is recognizing that the use, the use is just as equally important. So for instance, if there's a use that's not faith-based, but it's in the IR one, can't have a, can't have a tiny home at this point. The zone would allow for it, but the use guidance says no. So it's gotta be a two-pronged approach, it has to meet both tests in order for that, for that to qualify for a, a tiny home. So, let me throw up some pretty pictures and we can talk through some of these sites. Do you have any questions? I know you're, it looks like we're all sponges here right now. Usually you guys are shooting back questions at this point.
I have a couple of just.
Okay.
Off-the-cuff questions and I apologize, I've just, my background on tiny homes is, is not that robust. But in general, like, cause I was going through some of this, this checklist that we have here and it looks like a lot of this is, um, I mean, isn't this just a, like a trailer, like a travel trailer? This real loud.
Sherry, can you adjust his mic?
What is the difference between like a travel trailer and a tiny home? I guess it's designed to look like a conventional building, is that the?
Correct, there's standards that would not allow it. We would not allow a travel trailer to be cited, it would have to meet specific, so for instance, I'm not gonna name the names of some of these travel trailers, but.
That's okay.
It's, because just like we've done with other, yeah, we don't, we try, try to stay away from that kind of stuff. They're not designed to look like a residential unit.
Right.
These tiny homes are.
And, and is it up to the ANSI to determine that?
So the ANSI standards would, would then, they provide general standards by which, so it gives some parameters and tiny homes have come up with kind of their own stringent, um, standards. The interesting thing is, is during this research, I had mentioned the, the individual that had given the PowerPoint. He had gone to the manufacturer, had it built from the ground up. And then, when he was looking at the third party, cause there's a requirement for a third-party ANSI qualified individual to come out and do the inspection after the fact.
Right.
He said, they don't exist, and I said, well, hold on a second, they have to exist, because we put in the code, we wouldn't put in the code if it, if it wasn't a parameter. So then, I said, who's your manufacturer? So he gave me the name of the manufacturer and I reached out to him, I said, how does this work? Just educate me here, cause I am not educated to this at all, I'm just following the standards and if building tells me that there's something that needs to be done, we'll take a look at it. And so, it was interesting, cause, cause the individual that I spoke to said, you know, we actually have surprise inspections about every six, six to eight weeks. Sometimes sooner, sometimes later, but that's the general parameter. Um, if we're not operating within those standards, they shut us down or they cite us.
Right.
He goes, we don't want that.
No.
We wanna continue to be and, and remain in business, so that's not something, um, we're even interested in. And I said, well, hold on. So one of your, and, one of your inspectors that you've got that does this, do they do it third, do they do it third-party? Do they have somebody go out after the fact and? And he goes, no, I've never heard of that.
Yeah, okay.
So, now, this is only one manufacturer.
Sure.
So then I reached out to the second manufacturer that, um, that we used for citing the second one. I don't remember the states these were in. And I said, look, same questions. And he said the same thing. That, look, he said it was a little bit, he said it was more like ten to twelve weeks in terms of when they come and do their little surprise, but they know that they're coming, so it's like big brother, big sister coming down to say, you better not mess up with these standards, if you do, there's potential ramifications. So, I, it was educational for me, to say the least. Where I'm just looking at.
So how, how you're outlining this to me is that ANSI is done at the manufacturing level?
Yes. Yeah, and then it's, and it's inspected at the manufacturing level, so even before it leaves that building.
Got the stamp on it.
It's got the stamp. Well, it, it's a sticker, essentially. So it needs the sticker.
It gets the sticker that says this is an approved tiny home.
Correct.
And theoretically.
This has been built to ANSI standards.
To ANSI standards, well, yeah, and it, it, it gets the, it doesn't, it doesn't say it's a, it's a tiny home, it says it's built to the ANSI standards and it gives the specific number.
And in theory, the, the motivation to do a tiny home is, is cost, cause you could buy these prefab and you can buy them already made somewhere else.
Yeah, and I know there's been some, some residents here, some local experts that have done the research and there's a, they, the prices haven't gone down unfortunately, but they're still pretty reasonable in terms of what they offer, given the context of, of the square footage and how efficient they are overall, so.
Could you, um, tell me if you were planning to put, say, ten tiny homes on a lot? How that would compare financially, the cost, uh, to a, an apartment building?
I can't give you those numbers right now, but, guess what?
What?
I could bring that back.
Alright.
As a comparative analysis. Now, are we talking, let's, if, if you're, if you're asking for that kind of data, cause that's what we live with, right? Uh, planners live on data. And so does my department. I would want to ratchet that down, comparable in terms of square footage, is that what we're talking about? Because these tiny homes tend to be smaller in square footage, so it would be an efficiency comparison to, likely, efficiency comparison to what a typical um, tiny home would be, cause the tiny homes tend to be smaller in square footage.
Right, even smaller, even smaller than the apartment buildings that are conceivably being proposed.
Right.
Somewhere down the line.
Yeah, because it, I, I'll look at it and then we can talk about the pros and cons that come out of that, cause I can already think of a couple of different pros and cons. One is bedrooms, there could be more bedrooms that you could squeeze into an apartment in efficiency versus what you could get out of a, a tiny home. But then again, a tiny home tends to loft it and then you end up getting some wacky, cool, like dorm-like scenarios that come out of it, right? Where it's like people on top of people essentially, right? But everybody's got their own bed. So, let me, let me spin the numbers.
Thank you.
See what I come up with. But, there's gonna be some pros and cons to it, so.
I was fortunate enough to work for an architecture school when there was an active, um, a Net Zero Home competition between architecture, schools of architecture and engineering, on the Mall in Washington, and all of them had to be shipped from wherever they were built. Could have been New England, it could have been Los Angeles, several came from Los Angeles. And the y- young guy at the time who was in charge of that as a student volunteer, now lives in Ojai, interestingly enough. And he said, darn if you don't wind up with an interesting design, but, and I'm guessing it's, it's the ANSI regulations, but he said, you know, it's gotta go under a bridge, you know, on the, when it's on the road. And it's gotta do this and it's gotta do that, and he said, darn if the thing, it's like all the regulation is pushing you towards a really uninteresting design and, and it re, the, the, unless you work very hard at it, it, the result will read like a mobile home or a manufactured, um, uh, home. And he said, it's just sort of, it's all, it's all moves in that direction. And, uh, um, so you know, the question is how, if, if we're trying to create a new kind of dwelling size and configuration here that has the, the benefits of being manufactured off-site and brought onsite, the efficiencies associated with construction, indoor construction, um, and so on and so forth, how do we avoid some of the pitfalls which say, I can see it a half a mile ahead that it's a mobile home, that it's a, you know, it reads because of its dimensions, because of what's required inside, in other words, and what's required. and what's required outside, so that it can be trailered to the site or brought to the site." I assume that everything we're looking at has been built to ANSI standards. Is that, our, our regulation currently require ANSI standards?
Yes. Both, both of the tiny homes that have been cited are to ANSI standards, yes.
Right, and is that because we make an assumption that they're strong enough to withstand the environmental to and fro?
We had to look to a standard. The ANSI standard was the standard. Now, there's also beyond that, there's a Class A roof requirement from a fire retardant standpoint. That's beyond what ANSI, we added that as a condition. And the interesting thing is, is when, when I had, remember the presentation that I had from the individual? He said that wasn't an issue. Like it wasn't an issue, it was an easy fix during construction, so I'm not seeing that as a barrier. He didn't, he didn't, cause remember, these, these first two are really the pioneers for, you've drudged through it, so tell me your feedback, cause I was curious. That's the reason why he gave, I didn't have his face, a PowerPoint from him, but it was, it was refreshing to see. Cause he had been through, from what I could tell, quite a lot. And then recognizing that the end was a result of citing of, of a tiny home, so he was rewarded.
Sorry, one more quick question if that's okay. Has any other, cause I know this has been around for a while, and are there cities that are models that have had success with their programs?
Yes, there are. A city that I worked in before
Okay.
is a city that's modeled to a certain degree. The city of Riverside, a lot, much larger city, looked at these standards and created a parameters that are not only within Title X, but also have parameters in other, not Title X, it would be their zoning code. And then other parameters within other sections that address the tiny home situation. At that time, there was actually discussion of doing something similar to what's being asked of here. It's something that, that council had said, "Hey, take a look at some other areas." Faith-based was one of the, one of the ones that we were looking at at that point. And the reason why the faith-based seemed to be rational and reasonable is if you look at those sites, the vast majority of the sites, and you'll see when, when I pull up some of these sites, there's a building and then there's a lot of property around most of these. Either they're parking lots or it's just vacant land. And you see some of that in some of the, some of the sites where it's parked out and you're like, "Meh, doesn't, doesn't seem like it would be an appropriate location." But then you see other sites that it's a building and there's just a whole bunch of vacant land around it in varying sizes. And that could be for a number of reasons. There could be topography that makes it difficult, right? There could be, there could be landscaping that's there, that's been there for quite some time. There could be some other challenges that exist there that are, that are making it so it's there, it's vacant for a reason.
Have you had any requests coming from any of the religious communities to investigate using this on their property?
Not in this city. When we were researching it in Riverside, the whole reason why we started doing that was because we got requests. Inquiries is really what it boiled down to. They said a what-if.
But I mean, it's, it seems as though if, if we're talking about putting one in somebody's backyard, fine, we've kinda got that covered. This whole concept of, of doing multiple units on a parking lot does present a, a very different scenario. And I think before we get too down into the weeds figuring out how to do it, we should maybe listen to the religious community and see if anybody would be interested.
So as a follow-up,
Yes.
what staff could do is we could notify those various faith-based organizations that we've identified, that we'll be identifying here as soon as I get to the PowerPoint. And, and invite them to this conversation.
Yes.
Right now, we're not saying that they shall be, right? The discussion is the what-if, right? It's the what-if, so. Questions?
Oh, sorry.
There will be more.
Yeah, let's, we'll, we'll take a look at this and then we can ask some questions. Cause I did have one more, but we'll watch this first.
Is that in our packet?
Yes. List of potential sites?
Tiny homes, tiny houses.
No, that's not this chart.
Is, is that this one?
I don't think it is.
That's in here. That, that, that's in here at the, it's on the very last page.
You probably, let's see, hold on, I think there is some information, sorry.
Catchment B.
There you go.
Yeah. Yep, that's the one, Judy.
Okay. Way easier to leave.
Is it in here?
Catchment B, it's the very last page.
Okay. Yeah, what we gave was kind of an overview. There's some pin, pin drops of where each of these, I think there's ten or eleven, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. Ten in total. It identifies, one, two, three, four, five,
Well, the pins are hard to see on that map.
Yeah, that's the reason for the PowerPoint. It gave you addresses, so if you were interested in kinda driving the city, you had that opportunity. I've already talked about all these things, the summary. The sites in question that we're looking at here that are part of the faith-based include Ojai Unified Methodist Church, which is 120 Church Road. That's just off of Maricopa. Oops. Then there's Crotona Institute of Theosophy, which is off of Crotona Street, which is just to the north of Ojai Avenue on the western side of the city. I think we all know that site. That's the largest one. Then there's St. Andrews Episcopal Church, 409 Topo Topus Drive. It's about an acre and a half.
That's right, right down to the road.
Church of the Latter Day Saints, 411 St. Antonio Street. Sorry. About two and a half acres. And then Friends Worship Group, 506 Crestview. It's less than a quarter of an acre. Ojai Pedestrian Church, or Presbyterian, sorry. 304, I butchered that. 304 Foothill Road. It's about an acre and a half. And then First Baptist Church, 930 grand. It's on the north side, if I recall. That one's on the north side and that one's about four and a half acres. And then the well.
What was the Presbyterian acreage?
An acre and a half.
It says four and a half on here. It looks like maybe a
Oh, I think it's a typo. Sorry. Yeah, we went back and verified some of this. A site at sixty-nine thousand four hundred and thirty-seven square feet. An acre is forty-three, five, sixty, so that number's not correct. And then the well is twelve ninety grand on the south side and that's about three and three-quarters acre. Last one is Our Lady and All Angels, fifteen oh two East Ojai. So that's the very eastern edge of the city, one point seven nine acres. All right, so, there's the list. You've seen the list. I will admit, the square footage is where a little bit off, I think, on Ojai Presbyterian Church.
Is the Ojai Valley School, is that a religious-based?
No.
I don't think so. It didn't, it didn't come up on our radar.
It's PL school.
It is zone PL, yes. Okay, so the first one
Can I just ask you a question? So we have discovered that churches are a potential user of whatever we design here, because it's happened in Riverside.
Right, the, the offer was up at Riverside. I have yet to see a tiny home cited on, in Riverside.
What use are they putting this to? Is it, is it programmatic use for the church, meaning they, they give this to the pastor or minister at the church as a residence? Is it, or some other employee of the church? Is it a good way to provide relatively inexpensive housing for an employee who would otherwise have to live outside of town? Or is it just an economic use of the property and?
Is this, is this a rental stream for a church?
It could be. Yeah, I mean
But I'm just saying
When Yeah, I mean, they are nonprofits, but at the same time, the, the reality is, is when, we had the conversation with one of the representatives for the church in Riverside. This is Riverside, not, cause I haven't had any conversations with any, any of the local churches here. It was, we have, we have people living outside of the city and it's difficult. Riverside's traffic is horrible in the mornings. It was horrible always trying to getting in, getting in there in the morning, driving from the west side in there. So they're like, "We need people to be onsite. This is much easier." And plus, they were hiring individuals that some of the individuals didn't even have a car. So they're like, "It'd be much easier if we just cited them onsite versus..." So it was employee Some of it was meant to be for employee housing and some of it was meant to be for affordable housing to a certain degree. They saw, they saw opportunities for individuals that they knew about, like families, like a single mom or a single dad and they're, they're struggling to try to make, and Riverside, the, the cost of, at that time, the cost of living wasn't what it is today. It's just, it's gone up two, three times what it was when I was there in two thousand seventeen, eighteen. But, the interesting thing is, is they were looking at those as options and solutions because they had a real need. People were reaching out to them and obviously they had connections, so. I would assume something similar to that is happening in these faith-based organizations in this community. I don't think that Riverside was living in a bubble by any stretch of the imagination, so. If I'm, cause I can think of like three or four different sites that we were, we were looking at and researching and it was just, it was eye-opening to me to see that when you look at a, at a faith-based organizational site and there's just a whole bunch of vacant land, you're like, "Why is there all this vacant land?" And then they have a story for it. They're like, "Oh, we were, we bought this with the intentions of, or it was donated with the intentions of," and they had all these different unique stories, so. I'm assuming that's the same thing here, but it remains to be seen, so.
As long as it's not a short-term rental, it could be just another, could either be something where they're, they're providing affordable at zero rent housing for people who need it.
We ha, I, I will say this
Low rent for people who need it.
Even with these, these tiny homes, I mean, we gave them the whole shtick on, like, "Don't do tiny, don't even think about doing STRs." I mean, ADUs, we let them know that and, you know. There are some ADUs that somehow turn around and end up doing STRs and they get busted for it, so.
Not always.
And they, they claim foul play.
Let's, yeah, let's take a look at these sites.
See some most, see some more of your PowerPoint.
Okay, so, thank you. Do we wanna open up for public comment here as well, as we're doing this?
This is your staff report. I, I'd like to get through your staff report, ask questions of staff and then we'll take public
Okay, standard process. Sounds good. All right, so the first one is the Ojai Unified or United Methodist Church. It's 120 Church Road. The zone, this is the, this is the new one. This is the IR one. I was thinking it was the PL would be the only sites.
What does IR one mean?
It's institutional residential, yeah.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm curious why, I'm curious, what is in the IR two zone?
I think it's
that made you leave it off the list?
Well, one, there is no faith-based organizations in the IR two. The schools in the IR two. High school, I mean. And the hospital, I think, is IR two as well. I don't have the zoning map in front of me. Going off of memory.
And so this is only going to be, this is proposed to be only for faith-based organizations?
Correct.
in those zones?
Correct. The two-pronged approach. Up for discussion.
Okay, I mean, we're, we're kind of a magnet for lawsuits. And, and if you say, "This has to be a faith-based organization", seems the chances for someone who professes not to be that, but wants to do this
Oh, so you're
Litigating their entitlement.
Yeah, like any nonprofit could come to you.
We can run that through legal, obviously. Tice probably isn't gonna speak to that, or maybe she wants to. Here we go.
I will do some research on that and get back to you.
Okay, the reality is, is that it's, she's gonna be looking at case law and see if there's anything out there. It's probably gonna be more ADUs than it is tiny homes, cause it's not, there's not a whole lot of, aside from a Riverside or a San Jose. I mean, San Jose was really the, the, the one that started this whole thing in, in terms of opening up the, the door for this possibility. And then everybody else seemed to be following suit, copycats, if you will. But in doing that, I would say this, if you look at San Jose's model versus our model, it's different. I mean, theirs is much more general. They don't, they don't, they're not recognizing that they're in a valley like we are. And we have mountains on all sides and there's some concern, so we've recognized that and built that into our standards. And that has not proven to be a deterrent. Or, or, you know, in terms of it being red tape. At least with, with the first two. So, anyway, this is the first one. And then we have Crotono Institute, Crotona Institute of Theosophy. And that's to Crotona Street. This is the largest site. At a hundred and fifteen acres. And I don't want to So I don't want to overly concern the, the commission in thinking that you could just see an entire community being built here. There's a lot of topography that exists here. I did ask for that topography to be honest, it's not, but it, it is, if you were to look at
Topography's on the bottom right.
The, this area, literally, I
Yeah, it's like a mountain.
You're not gonna, nothing's getting, that's not happening.
And the south end of it is a bioswale.
Right, and then you've got this going on. I mean, aside from the buildings that are already there, there are, there's some topog, topography challenges here. This is an uphill, I mean, it's, this is, this is an issue. I would say this is not as much and neither is this, but that's obviously where all the buildings are. And then there's a challenge with some topography up here, so it's built on not a significant slope, but a slope that creates some challenges.
Did, did the Crotona group build here, Mina, as a housing adjacent, or am I?
For retired teachers or some such.
Yeah, I thought it was
Not anymore.
that they built it for their uses.
I don't know the history on it.
Okay.
But that could be something. I don't know, I could do research on it, but I'm not sure that the context of that really helps the conversation. Okay, good. Just wanted to clarify that. All right. This is St. Andrews Episcopal on the south side of Ojai Avenue, an acre and a half. This one's a little tighter. The space is significantly tighter than what we're looking at here, pretty much built out. I find it, I find it difficult to cite. Someone had mentioned earlier, you start putting tiny homes in parking spaces. The challenge that I, I think we would have there is I don't think that we're, we're in the business of, of taking away parking from these faith-based organizations. Mainly because they're probably already tied on parking as it is, so that just means more parking
Are we in the business allowing them to take parking away?
And that's a discussion. I think staff's recommendation is, I think we wanna stay away from that.
Yeah, that'd be a mess.
Right. All right, so then we have the Church of Latter Day Saint. That's actually just to the south and west of the one we were just looking at. That one is pretty well built out. There is some areas here and here and off to the sides here, but it's, it's pretty well
Mostly parking lot. Mostly parking lot.
Yeah, it's mostly parking lot. Unless there's a, unless there's some sort of study that shows that they have excess parking.
It abuts the trail there on the north.
And it does abut the trail to the north, yes.
Now, a question, if they did have excess parking and we did allow a tiny home, does that tiny home need to have some sort of setback or some sort of like, you know, like, like a fence or like a yard or?
That's the fun thing about this is that we can.
Literally on the parking lot.
We have the ability to put parameters in, but remember, what was the, what was the key issue? How do we remove barriers, not replace barriers? Right, so that's, that's kind of the, when, when my staff and I looked at this and we spent quite a bit of time looking at it and kind of thinking about it and talking through different scenarios, like you're just, like you're talking about. And a scenario of, well, what if we did this and we took this away? We're like, well, hold on, let's remember the matrix. Are we removing a barrier or replacing a barrier? We want to try to stay away from, unless the barrier that we're replacing makes it less stringent of a process than what we were looking at before, but makes it reason, this is the kind of deep dive that we were doing and rabbit hole stuff we were doing. But then allowing it to, to be in a scenario that the process is less stringent. Okay, so then does it check that box? That's kind of the, the thought process we were going through. Okay, so the next one is the Friends Worship Group. This is a pretty small site and it's in a residential neighborhood.
Where is that?
That's just a house?
Oh, oh, the little yellow box down there, okay. It's a residence that's being used as a religious facility?
Correct. That one, you could potentially put, put one back here, but you'd lose all of your, you'd like, you'd lose the rest of it back there.
It's residentially zoned, isn't it?
It is R one, yes. Yep.
So it's already allowed?
It's already allowed, I'm not sure we have that in here, actually. Disregard this one for now.
That's the one on Crestview?
Yeah, because I wanted us to focus today on the PL sites and the IR one and IR three.
Right, okay. It's marked as R one on the chart.
But I think the reason why we added it is because it was a faith-based and we're just showing examples outside of the boundaries. Okay, so Ojai Presbyterian Church.
That's a huge parking lot.
It is, there's a lot of parking. I know we, we kind of cut it off here, but it really does include this.
Strange the way you outlined it because. That, that northwest corner, which back in the day was a stable, by the way.
Oh, back here?
That stable belonged to that house directly to the north there, which is in the middle of that residential block. It's entirely enclosed by other residential properties and the church.
Oh, that house right there, I see.
This house right here?
No, no, down. Down to the right, to the right.
Right there.
That house.
Oh.
It's weird that that's a house.
That is a, and the, and the driveway, the driveway is at the north edge.
Yeah, I see that, the little.
Of the church property.
Yeah, interesting.
Runs out onto Foothill.
Oh, here?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I thought that parking lot now all belonged to the church.
Yeah, they must have sold it because it is a massive parking lot.
Yeah, this is, I don't know why we drew the line like this, but it really needs to come up to here.
That could be a potential tiny home bonanza right there.
Well, remember, the idea is to remove red tape, but I know, I'm not sure that we're in the business of then parking tiny homes where parking, parking spaces are so replacing.
Business to encourage tiny homes just to get out of the way?
Not encourage, but provide for a more, or a less stringent approach than what currently the two that have been cited have gone through.
Less stringent because we're not getting enough takers?
Well, we're getting some interest. We're just not getting enough that are interested enough to.
To navigate the whole process.
Navigate the whole process.
Okay.
The two, the two, just to be fair, the two that really went through the process from start to finish was to allow for really their family to come back and stay in a place and it was, yeah. So they were, they were motivated by, there was a motivation there for them.
Well, if you get into this business of comparing the cost of multiple tiny homes to an apartment building, there's, there's an oddity there because every tiny home has a complete exterior wall. And an apartment building does not.
That's why I, I'm sure there are.
I would think an apartment building would be cheaper to build.
Remember, pros and cons.
Yeah.
Pros and cons, right? And I'm not, I may not phrase it that way when the staff reports get, gets printed, but it's going to be something like that. Identifying what the things are for the apartment, amenities maybe, if you will, versus what the tiny home provides.
Like a laundry room.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah. Where's the laundry, right?
Well, I got a, I got a question on, on tiny home, just in general. So if I have like.
Can't hear you.
Oh, sorry. So if, let's say there's a church and they want to, they want to put a tiny home on their property. They can sell that tiny home, right? But, and, and they can use that land for something else if they want.
Uh-uh, you can't sell it.
They can't sell it?
No. No, it, it be.
Permanent?
ADU.
ADU, yeah.
Because it is treated as.
Is a movable tiny home an ADU or not an ADU?
We fa- we have it following the ADU parameters within the code, so that means.
Except you're, you're making it different.
At this point. Now, as the current rules read, now, obviously the rules have set sunsetted. You can have one or the other, but not both. These rules allow for some flexibility in that. The selling, though, is not addressed in here at this point. I don't think that that is the intent or even the direction that council had given us at that point. Yeah, but it's a. Write down some stuff here.
Because I know that, I think there is a law being proposed at the state level about the ability to sell an ADU like a condo. So.
That's a Tyce question.
I, I'm not aware of that proposal, but I can again, look into it and get back to you.
Commissioner Trent, or Vice Chairman Trent, just to be fair, there's a lot of bills that are constantly.
It's okay, you don't have to look at it, don't worry.
A lot of times, they're not telling us about the bills unless it's to the point where like, okay, this one looks like it's, it's going to be signed.
More of a curiosity.
Let's keep you up to speed. So I, I mean, there's.
If it's helpful, I can definitely look into it.
It's not a big deal, I mean, it was just.
I, I would like the answer to that.
I think it, I think it would be helpful.
I mean, it'd add value to an ADU, that's for sure.
If, if the Presbyterian Church decided that they wanted to build a whole community in that far back parking lot and then sell it off, that would be of concern.
And then the question is, is because with these tiny homes, it requires a, a pad or foundation. And then on top of that, you end up citing either a tiny home on chassis or on its own.
It's just got to be more expensive than an apartment building.
You'd think so.
Yeah, I would think so.
I'm just looking, the, the attachment, A, your proposed text amendment, let's call it for the moment, subsection M, and this is on page ten, nine, where movable tiny houses starts. We've been saying homes, but houses, I guess. It says, "A movable tiny house that meets the requirements and definition in this subsection, which is subsection M, may be built and occupied as a new detached accessory dwelling unit if it complies with these standards." So it is an accessory dwelling unit. It is an ADU.
Correct.
But it's a special ADU because it has wheels.
Because it's got wheels. It's a, it's a menu of options of alternative housing choices. So you've got the ADU that is on a foundation and has this.
Stick built or by conversion or whatever.
About this recent, like, just recently. That there are a number of parameters and those parameters just continue to grow, right? It's like the universe, it just continues to expand. Here, what we're looking at is an opportunity to say, hey, if you have, if you are not interested in doing an ADU, but instead you're like, hey, I want to see what, what the parameters are, how we can put this tiny home on, on my site.
This particular version of an ADU?
Of an ADU, which is being referred to as a tiny home.
Yeah.
Right, right, yeah.
Have you still got more of your?
I do.
Okay, then I won't.
I mean, we're stopping and starting, it's fine.
Okay, let's, let's finish with your presentation.
Okay.
And then hear some public comment and then doing, do what sounds unlawful like, like deliberation that we're doing here now.
Uh, you're asking questions and then follow-up, I think you're fine.
That First Baptist?
This is First Baptist Church of Ojai, north side of Grand.
This, we did that monument sign.
Yep, monument sign, the front was done a while back. I applaud you for your efforts. I was optimistic of that, I wasn't a huge fan of it, but you convinced me. It does actually look good, if any of you guys have driven by at night, but it's a good-looking sign. Here is kind of the area of, of possibility. Obviously, there's residential on all, all three sides there.
I have a friend who lives there, that, that, those oak trees are gorgeous.
Yeah.
These are right here?
Farm.
Oh, was it?
It was a farm. That's why there's no street in there. Why, why park bent around it?
You know your history.
I've been here, well, next year will be sixty.
Wow, dang, nice.
Sixty-four was the first time I spent time up here.
Okay, and then there's the, so just to the, I believe this one's to the east and the south of Grand is the Well-Ojai Valley Christian Fellowship.
Lots of space there too.
Three and about three-quarters acre. If you recall, this is also where we had a new home that was built just recently.
Oh, yeah.
And this would be the area that's.
Oh, yes.
There's a good spot back there, yeah.
That's the well, all right. Yeah, right at the lower-left corner there was that.
That project.
A house that came before us.
FYI, that house has an ADU.
It what?
It has an ADU on, on the side.
Yes, it does, right over the garage.
Right. All right, and then I think this is the last one. Our Land and All Angels.
Oh, yeah, I know that.
So this one's a little bit smaller in stature.
Yeah.
And then it's got access off of Ojai Ave.
It's really pretty.
Through an easement.
Art by San Antonio Creek.
That's the last one, yeah. So those are the sites that we've been looking at and those encompass the PL, IR one, IR three. Although we did throw in R one. I'll have to ask Kylo why we added that one, but I think it was just to show that there is actually a faith-based organization in the R one already. So, but that one's very tight.
Sure, the three-eleven park that we just did tonight wasn't one of those.
Three-eleven park, which one was that one?
Otherwise known as Shabbat of Ojai.
Oh, you're talking, I'm sorry, you're talking about the one we just talked about.
Right.
Through, okay. Right.
Okay. Well, let's, before, before we dig any deeper, let's have some public comment. Bill Miley? Mr. Miley?
My printer didn't work, so I'm going to have to read it off my iPad. About five years ago, when this issue was raised by a city council, I made an effort to champion manufactured homes as more efficient, economical, and livable. I even made a scale model, one inch per foot, showing a tiny house, a park house, which is a maximum of three hundred and ninety-nine square feet, and a small two-bedroom manufactured house. Prices then were about sixty to eighty thousand for a tiny house, fifty K on special for a park house, and seventy K for a two-bedroom house manufactured. I did not convince the then-city council there was any value. I then tried with your commission. In the following pages that I put into my email, I presented evidence that Tumbleweed Tiny Houses of Colorado, which is one of the major ones in the nation, their prices start at a minimum of ninety-nine thousand. Park Houses of Lindsay, California, Champion Homes, which have a maximum of three hundred and ninety-nine square feet, start at fifty-two thousand. And their two-bedroom, a hundred and one thousand. Delivery and foundation and permitting is added to them. I was going to bring my models tonight, but I am too old to carry them anymore. The point I am trying to make is that there's a much better way to get affordable housing into Ojai through our code ordinances and special programs. I suggest we work to facilitate park houses and small manufactured houses for affordable living. Then I showed you a typical tiny house that is offered by Tumbleweed for ninety-nine, excuse me, ninety-seven thousand dollars, eight and a half percent for twenty-five years. Answering the question of space, it has on the first floor, which is eight foot and above, two hundred and fifteen square feet. That's like a ten-by-twenty room. And in the loft, which is above stairwise, it's about four feet high and it has seventy-seven square feet, so you crawl around up there. The park home, which was this one here, you have all this. It's a maximum of three hundred and ninety-nine square feet, eight feet high, one bedroom. Well, you saw what the floor plan is. Currently, you can buy that, it's on sale, for fifty-seven thousand dollars, plus shipping, permitting, and foundation, which is about maybe thirty thousand dollars at the most. This is the one that I'm really excited about. This is a bungalow house. My daughter and son-in-law, fifteen years ago, bought a house in Santa Barbara that looks just like this. It has nine hundred square feet. This one has, this one has nine hundred and seventy-one square feet, two bedrooms, nine hundred and seventy-one square feet, not two fifteen. And the price today is a hundred and one thousand dollars, plus the shipping, the installation, the foundation, and the permitting. So I do hope your commission will consider the above comparisons for Ojai's affordable housing needs. Okay. From the beginning, I was and still am a critic of tiny houses on wheels. I don't like them. I said each time I spoke, there are much better ways to get accessible housing from a cost basis, from a living basis, and efficiency, whatever that means. There are trailers which try to look like small houses. They are very small, there is very little storage. Each requires at least eighty feet, square feet of outside decking. And where's all the stuff going to be placed? I know where it's going to be placed, on the deck, under the deck. Lucas talks about problems in the process of getting a permit. As I read it all over, I read the whole thing over. The third-party anti-approval was the problem. And you were proposing to get rid of that, I think. Talk about the size, talk about, talk about the size. For ninety-seven thousand dollars. For ninety-seven thousand dollars, plus the travel to get it here, and the foundation, and the permitting, you get two hundred and fifteen livables, square feet, eight foot, okay? I wanna speak about, on page sixteen of the report that showed the charts, Attachment A, Table 2.2, allowable uses in the various districts we have, which are nine.
That's all the residential.
Oh, well, yeah, that's right, okay. Mobile home parks are allowed in all of them with conditional use permits. Agree? Mobile home parks. You can put-
With the CUP.
Anywhere in a residential district.
With the CUP, yeah.
That's right, okay. A mobile home, single mobile home, you can only put it in one place, which is an R1. That doesn't seem very right. We're talking about putting tiny houses in various places. I'd like to see that changed.
Okay.
That's it, thanks.
Thank you, Bill. We have another local-
Local.
Public commenter.
Yeah, right, thank you. Larry Steingold. What is the goal? If the goal is to have more housing, it's a house. It's on wheels. It's a mobile home. That's what it is, okay? It's not something else. It's not a lemon, it's not an apple, it's a mobile home. It's got wheels. If it doesn't have wheels, it's an ADU that's on the ground. Alright, you take the wheels off, it's permanent, unless you can jack it up and take it away, right? And then it's a portable home. So what are we talking about here? If there's more than one or two on a property, it's a mobile home park. Or, I guess, an SB nine, an SB ten, you can have three homes on a property legally, I guess, four. So you could have three houses-
Two ADUs.
Right, so they can call them whatever you want. You wanna call them tiny homes, mobile homes, take the wheels off, it's now an ADU. So what is all the discussion about? I mean, it passes ANSI, it's a mobile home. It's got a fireproof roof. Somebody wants to drop it in their backyard on a pad and hook it up to sewer and gas and water, it's an ADU. That's what it is. If it's on wheels, take the wheels off. He's allowed to do it, okay? I mean, this is, it goes on and on and on. Regulations? You wanna make it simpler? It's gonna take five years to build this thing over here, the Bryant Street, four years. Five years? Even back where I come from, you can do it in two. I mean, it's insane out here. Guys take five years to build a single-family house. You wanna make it less? It's zoned for what it is. Call it a day. You gotta have a pad, you gotta have a sewer connection. I'm sorry, you gotta pay for a straight connection, you can't run it through your house. You're gonna have a water line, you're gonna have all these things. Call it whatever it is. It's a small ADU. Who cares? The guy wants to live in twenty, the person. The person wants to live in eighty square feet, that's his right. They wanna live in five hundred square feet? Morty wants to have something for eight hundred, great, as long as it complies. What difference does it make? You have the rules, call it a day, and move on. I mean, this is insane. You wanna take the barriers away? What are the ADU? You gotta have this, you gotta have that. The guy came in, here are the parameters, bing, 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 done, call it a day, build it. I mean, but it's a mobile home park if you have more than four. That's what it is, and it's a business, and it's a commercial in a residential zone. How many lots are there here that can actually work? I mean, what I'm getting, I mean, being practical. I mean, can I stick an ADU in my backyard? Sure. Can I stick a tiny home in my backyard? Maybe. But, but so what? Okay, if I have the right and I have the permits and I fit the box, it's the end of it, and let's call it a day. Now, do you want more density here? That's a whole nother problem. And do we want a thousand ADUs? That's another thousand people. Now we're up to how many? Do you really want a tenant in your backyard? That's a whole nother operate, a whole nother thing. But the permitting process, why is it so difficult? You come in, you go, you follow the, Morty did, okay? And what's the big deal? He came in, and it's done.
Thank you, Larry. Sherri, is there anyone out there who wants to speak? Raised hands?
Nope.
Alright, then we are going to close the public comment portion of this discussion item and bring it back to the commission. I have a couple of questions, and I don't wanna get too far into the weeds here, because that's not why we're here tonight. There seems to be a lot of pushback on a perceived requirement for a third-party inspector. The, the plain language of this thing right now, this is on page eleven of Attachment A, the last paragraph. What, what has been proposed to delete is reference to a court-qualified third-party inspector. But it also says, "or was built to meet ANSI standards," or NFPA standards. Okay, it seems to me by, if, if it in fact has been built to ANSI or NFPA standards, then it must have been certified by someone, doesn't have to be a third-party qualified inspector, but why remove that option? And, and if it has not been certified to have been built to ANSI or NFPA standards, why is it here? It seems to me we're now talking about an issue of public health and safety. The city would not allow an ADU, a stick-built ADU, or a residence, or a multifamily residence, to be built not according to California Building Standards Code. And, and so either these mobile tiny houses, movable tiny houses, are built to ANSI or NFPA standards, or they are not. And if they are not, or if the manufacturer won't certify that they are, then I'm leery of having them in the city. I'm, I'm confused by that. I thought in our earlier discussion tonight, you said that the two people that are here, the manufacturer said, oh, yes, it's built to ANSI standards. And that's already in the black-letter law here. So why, why would someone say you're creating a barrier by requiring a certified, qualified, third-party inspector when in fact you're not?
Can I help clarify? I don't know if this-
Yeah, I'd, I'd like some clarification on that.
I, I think that the main difference is the third-party. I think what it's saying is it's still meeting ANSI standards through the manufacturer, but-
It says, "or was built to meet."
Well, they crossed out "or," so was built to meet ANSI standard.
Right, but as, as the law stands right now-
So it meets the standard.
If it is built to meet the standards-
Yeah, then it's-
It's okay.
Yeah, it doesn't need to be verified by a third-party.
Third-party qualified, right.
Yeah.
They're getting rid of that.
So what's the problem, is my question?
What, what is, what are you, I don't understand what your problem is. I mean, they're crossing out the third-party.
I know. There was discussion earlier saying that trying to find a qualified thirty, third-party inspector to do a certification is an impossible task.
Right.
Okay, but-
Okay, but that's not the only way to get there.
No.
The other way is to say it was built to meet the standards.
Exactly.
And so, what's the problem? Why, why is anybody pushing back on qualified third-party inspectors if you don't need them?
Which is why they cross this out.
Yeah, right now we're saying you have to-
Now, now it's barring that sort of certification.
Yeah, we were, before, we were saying it has been certified by a third-party, and now we're saying it doesn't have to be.
"Or was built to meet."
Oh, we do have "or" in there, yeah, why, why is it an issue if we have "or"?
So either way would work, and, and-
He's got a point, with "or."
If, if the qualified third-party inspector is an impossible task to find-
I got you.
Then was it built to meet, meet the standards or not? If the manufacturer cannot say that it was built to meet those standards, then I'm not sure I want it in this town.
Yeah, I get what you're saying.
It may be a public health or a fire safety kind of question.
And they might-
But if it was built to meet those standards, then who cares?
I, I think the thing is "or."
Yeah, I think it's important to read the entire definition, because there's an I, an I two, and then there's an III. It goes all the way to basically Roman numer, Roman numeral nine. The first one actually says, "is licensed and registered by the California Department of Motor Vehicles."
Okay.
And-
Do they certify things?
They were, well-
Licensed and registered.
Licensed and registered, so it's a registration requirement, just like you would for-
For a car.
For a car, okay, to get a license plate.
Correct.
But they don't look at ANSI standards to put a license plate on your movable tiny home?
Yeah, because they're wheels.
And if they do, then haven't we already solved it by requiring that it be licensed by the DMV?
Well, that's the first piece of I. Then it goes on to say, "and has been certified as meeting ANSI standards eleven nine point two, or eleven nine point five."
Right.
And then-
Or National Fire Protection Association standard.
Right. So there's some redundancy. When we were looking at this, we noticed there's some redundancy in the "or" statements.
Yeah.
Um, and I think the perception was, when you're looking at that standard and then you look at the next standard, the, the thought was, well, shoot, then what we have to do first is see if we can meet, so it's the, it's the, it's the law of test, is what we were using here, which was, can you have a third-party certify this? And what we kept finding is exhaustively, no, there is no third-party. Okay, so then what's the next test? Or eleven nine point two, well, that's already required with the first one. Or NFPA standard eleven ninety-two, which I'm not sure what that standard is, just to be fair, I haven't looked at that one. Or provide sufficient evidence to the satisfaction of the director that the movable tiny home was built to, to equivalent fire and life safety standards.
Right, okay.
Not a huge fan of that one, but it, it exists there as kind of a catch-all.
Flexibility.
Right. The, and-
On the other hand, you're denying the flexibility if somebody actually found a qualified third-party inspector.
Correct.
This would not allow them to use that person.
With the removal of this, it would not.
Right.
But we're seeing that as a barrier, because they're, they're spending, when you're spending, the, the, what it really boils down to is efficiency. You want the standards to be clear, concise, understandable, and don't offer an extensive amount of time for research, deliberation, and eventual certification. If the process itself is already wrapped into something that's already being pre-manufactured before it gets out there, that gets rid of most of the red tape. The fact that these tiny homes are built in a building and then rolled off-site as being done, meaning they've already, they've already gone through the process of having it designed and built to whatever their parameters are within the boxes that they're providing. I know, uh, Bill was talking about something slightly different, um, and, and a price points that are probably different than what the tiny homes are as well. But there's efficiency that's built into that. And on top of that, instead of building it onsite or siding it onsite, you roll it onsite. So there's not a lot of, of noise and, um, other deterrents that tend to come with construction.
That's a good thing, too, but if I come in with a tiny home and I say, okay, I have a license plate on it, and the manufacturer says it was built to meet ANSI standards-
And you've got the sticker that states that.
Then, then you say, you're golden.
Right. It's the, it's the confusing piece of the "or" statement, because it's identifying in the first one that there's the ANSI standards that you have to meet. And then it goes on to say, well, since those are already the "ors", the third-party piece, does that still have to be satisfied? So it was, it was-
Not if it's "or."
Well, if you're meeting in the first one, I mean, I get what you're saying. Um, if it's, if it's already being addressed in I, then why, why is, why is the third-party piece?
Whether it is being addressed in I. Does getting a license plate from the DMV mean that someone at the DMV has looked at certification under the ANSI or NFPA standards? I don't know the answer to that.
Yeah, I-
But if the answer is yes, then you don't need two or three or four.
Uh-
If the answer to that is no-
I think the answer is no.
I can haul any old thing over to the DMV and they'll give me a license plate, and I don't mean that pejoratively. If they are not including that in their list of requirements, then you do need to have somebody somewhere certifying these fire and life safety standards, ANSI or NFPA or, or otherwise.
I would maintain, and this is a guess, that a lot of these standards are about the roadworthiness of the vehicle. If it's being regulated by the Department of Motor Vehicles, and then you ask, but there's no motor in it, well, it's a drag-along vehicle.
Right.
Um, but the emphasis here is on the frame and the width and the height and all of the things.
Fire and life safety, yeah.
And will it go sixty-five miles an hour being towed by the, by a pickup truck and make a curve of, of a certain radius without flying off of its, you know, those, those are the kinds of things that those engineers are looking at. They're not looking at. But what if that's all just used once to get it on-site? A lot of money is being expended. We're, there's, there's an industry that's built up to build mobile homes. And there are, there are already inspectors of mobile homes who inspect them under construction. So there's a whole industry that is reinforcing this idea of mobility. But I would bet you, and one of the frustrations that I have, not unlike Mr. Miley, is that, you know, if you were to start from scratch and say, what are we trying to accomplish here? We're trying to accomplish the construction of smaller, reasonably-priced homes, um, and the, the mobility of them, you have to, you know, there's, there's no problem with craning them onto the site and bringing them on the back of a truck without its own, without having them have their own carriage underneath it. I mean, we're doing a lot in terms of that, my guess is, through the ANSI requirements that is requiring from an engineering standpoint that these things are roadworthy and are going to meet the needs of a highway system that's gonna transport it at sixty-five miles an hour. And I just think, you know, doing a rethink of it, now, it's, it's much easier-
The case.
It, it's a, it's a default-
Then it doesn't meet the definitions.
We're default, we're defaulting to a roadworthy vehicle, and I'm just, I'm asking the question, do, does the road, roadworthy vehicle get us a community of small houses that are, what are, what the people we want to have here are able to afford, when there's a lot of engineering and a lot of capability of being able to drag it around on a, on a, on a hitch? And we're defaulting to the rules and regulations that were designed for dragging it around with a hitch. And I'll bet ANSI, if you look at it, is about, is, is about the issue of, you know, will it take the torque? Will it, will the whole thing slide over? Things that you would not concern yourself with if you were to say, I need to build a dwelling on a spot, and it's gonna be, it's gonna be craned in.
That, that may very well be. I don't think that any of us here on the commission have any idea what the details of the ANSI or NFPA standards are, whether they are roadworthiness or whether they are equivalent to some other set of fire and life safety standards. I don't know. I don't know specifically when, when this subsection M of seventeen oh nine was put in. I didn't see it in this text here. Usually they say, well, okay.
But if, uh-
But, I'm, I'm assuming that somebody before staff put this language in, somebody on staff read ANSI one nineteen point two, and one nineteen point five, and NFPA eleven ninety-two. I don't know what's in those. But, but if it is not, if, if those are not fire and life safety standards, then I am concerned about having- Then I am concerned about having housing in this city. That meets those but doesn't necessarily meet any fire or life safety standards.
So if I could just.
Please, enlighten us.
The wonderful thing about internet is you can look it up fairly quickly, we're discussing something.
Yeah, well, you've got the computer in front of you.
In this, the ANSI, so it's ANSI one one nine point. Uh, I have point five here, requirements. The standards cover for one one nine point five, cover the fuel systems and equipment. Health, fire and life safety provisions, plumbing systems and and construction requirements. So that's, that is one one nine point five requirements.
So it's it's sort of a a. Portion similar to the building standards code for. Mobile movable tiny houses. Or mobile homes for that matter, I guess.
Yeah, so the it covers broadly, it seems like it covers pretty much the the construction of it. Talks about life safety and fire safety as well, right? The NFPA eleven ninety-two, that covers recreational vehicles. And that's, that's just a broad statement. Recognize standards for defining the building codes for recreational. Park models, so park models, I would assume would mean not something that's rolled in on its own, but something that has to be hauled in.
Okay, so so if I were, if I were at the front desk. And someone came in and said, I've got a movable tiny house that I want to locate in Ojai. And I've got a license plate from the DMV. But I can't find a qualified third-party inspector. To say that I'm meeting ANSI eleven one nineteen point five, I don't know one nine, one nineteen point two. And I can't get the manufacturer to certify that it was built to one nineteen point five.
Or one nineteen point two.
Or one nineteen point two, or NFPA eleven ninety-two, whatever is in those other two. If somebody came to me and I was a city employee and said those things, I would say, I don't want that structure in this city. Because I don't know if it is going to be fire safe. But if it is, if it if it was built to meet and the manufacturer said so. And you've got the sticker. Then you're done. I I don't, I don't see where the barrier was that that. The city council would like to have us lower or eliminate.
Yeah, the barrier existed, we were using this as a hierarchy. I mean, when we were talking this through, it was certified qualified third-party, go find that first.
We were, we were sort of glossing over the or part.
Well, because if if we if we gloss over the or part, they're gonna immediately come to me and say, okay, why don't you just approve it? And when I look at that, I I look at it from the standpoint of saying, well, have you looked at these other two options and what was the result of those options? So it required these first two to drudge through and. Look, when this code first came forward, it was assumed that there was a third-party. They wouldn't put this in there unless it was.
Somebody thought there was.
Yeah, been vetted through. And there's some assurances. It's since been, for through these first two, it's been identified that that does not exist. So we don't just jump to the conclusion or to the end, which would be the last part of this of this sentence. Which is III, instead. There, I'm all about checks and balances, and with something like this, go find a third-party. It doesn't exist. Show me why it doesn't exist, proof's in the pudding, right? And that's the way in which I looked at at this standard, okay, so that doesn't exist. The or says, then go to the next thing, which is the NFPA standard eleven ninety-two. Can we apply that? Yes, we can, well, portions of it, why? Provide me the information that identifies why only portions of it can be applied. And then the third piece is me. And at that point, you're relying on me, something's going on.
Yeah, you in this. II, you've got four ways to get there. You've got. Third-party inspector. Or built to meet the ANSI standards, or built to meet NFPA. Or equivalent fire and life safety. That's four ways to get there.
The third-party is ensuring that it's built to the ANSI standard, so it's three, I think. The way I read this, it's three. It's certified by a qualified third-party inspector for ANSI compliance with. ANSI standard eleven nine point two or eleven nine point five. And then the or statement after that covers.
Or built to meet.
Or NFPA standard eleven ninety-two, that's the s- that's the second piece. If you don't have, if you can't do the third-party, then you go to the next piece, which is the NFPA standard eleven ninety-two. If for whatever reason, only portions of that can be met, and they're giving me reasons why, which didn't end up happening. Um, we were able to address it, then it falls on to to me, and I I'm not a huge fan of that. And for me, I would be looking more for, you need to provide me evidence of why these standards weren't able to be met. And why we're we're suddenly at the bottom of the barrel and I'm suddenly, you know. Trying to address how something like this is gonna still be safe in the city. Now, this is one piece, there are other things in here that I think address movable tiny homes and ensure safe. The safety and the the fire situation that we're talking about as well. But it is an important piece.
Definitions.
Over in page thirteen, I see NFPA two twenty-five. But that's foundation and installation.
Attachment A, page ten of nineteen, definitions.
Yeah, it's the sum of the whole, it's it's each of these pieces that help to.
One, two, two, one.
Yeah, I'm looking at at the very top of ten, is that what you're looking at?
No, yeah, I'm just looking at what a definitions of a tiny home is. Says, one of the conditions is it's licensed and registered with the California Department of Motor Vehicles and has been certified as meeting ANSI standard. One one nine point two or one one nine point five.
Yeah, that that seems to me. That second paragraph under definitions seems to me to cover the whole thing.
Yeah, it just doesn't include.
And if you meet that.
It does include the NFPA or and it doesn't include the equivalent fire or life safety standards, but. You wouldn't have to repeat the ANSI standard, because it's already addressed as a definition.
I'm I'm. I'm I'm stuck trying to figure out what the barrier is that we're trying to lower here.
Yeah, I think it's just the third-party removing.
It's the third-party piece, but I know what you're saying.
Party was was one of several alternatives with ors between.
Bunch of ors.
But you've got to remember that, I I get what you're saying, you're saying, well, the third-party isn't necessarily only, it's not the end-all be-all.
There there are other ways to get there.
Yes, but it's one, I think what's important to understand that that in this process. The first one that came forward took us over a year to get through.
Because you were searching for a certi- a qualified third-party inspector?
Well, there was several things, I mean, when you're going through, when you're dredging through something for the first time, you're working pretty closely with building, right?
Well, everybody's got to learn what's in the ANSI and NFPA standards.
And I would say there's probably partially a learning curve to the building inspector, addressing these standards, ensuring that that. We have a good model to use moving forward, right, in terms of what what the paperwork. Uh, you know, proof's always in the pudding in terms of how we look at these things. When they, when they got to this point, it was go find a third-party and don't come back and talk to me until you figure this out. And then when they came back and said.
Who they?
Well, it was myself and building, so it was community development said, go find your third-party and come back and talk to us. So they went and did.
Cause they haven't been certified as being built to these standards.
Well, it's a, it's a second piece, is certified by a qualified, is certified by a qualified third-party inspector. Um, for ANSI compliance with ANSI standards eleven.
Now, we're talking about the definitions portion, not the application portion.
Yes, the definitions portion. So not only is there the requirement, which is the first one for the ANSI standards, and I won't read the numbers again. But then it says, a third-party needs to make sure that they're compliant with it, it's not just compliant with it, which is what the manufacturer requires.
That seems unreasonable if it's already been certified as meeting standards.
Right, that's that's really the the crux of what we ended up finding out, but it it took us going through. The process and unfortunately, the first, the first person going through this process to realize that. So, and even when we were talking, he was saying, look. I've already require, I've already met them, you see my sticker, you talk to the manufacturer, you see that it's being met. Why am I having to then go through it again to re-verify?
That would, that would be an unreasonable barrier, I agree.
We want to make sure the sticker's legit.
Is the sticker legit? So then realizing that, we're like, okay, so then maybe that's, that is an unreasonable requirement to have moving forward. Then the question is, then why do we have it? If if it's already being vetted through the first piece. Right, it's a redundancy, but it took us some time to realize that that was redundant. We were, we were looking at it saying, no, you need to meet this, it's already been vetted, we know that they exist, and like, no, we, they don't. They exist within the fact that they go to the manufacturer, but not that they go a third-party. Be the point of that. I don't want to keep beating a dead horse, but it it was something where. I was convinced, I'm like, oh, it was a third-party, just go find the third-party, it's that's as simple as that, and they're saying it's. The people that first put this in. Doesn't exist. So, I, here's the thing though. It may not require us, I mean, I I have us in here removing the entire thing. It may not require the entire thing to be removed, maybe we look at. Cause it's it's also has the NFPA standard, uh, eleven ninety-two, which is for recreational vehicles. Or provide sufficient evidence, so there could still be that catch-all. Um, where where the director ends up being the final authority, but I can tell you, any director that's gonna be doing this. Meet myself or even beyond, is not going to be doing it saying, oh. So I've just got authority to do this, no, you're gonna want backup for that, cause in the event that a question comes up or. Or concerns are raised, you want to have that. Uh, that backup to support it, so. There is a possibility where the first sentence is removed and the rest of it remains.
I I could see at that bottom part of page ten. Regardless of the paragraph numbering at the moment, after it says the following conditions, I could see. The first subset is licensed and registered with the DMV. The second is, has been certified. By the manufacturer or a qualified third-party inspector. To meet ANSI standard X and Y and NFPA standard Z. Or. Number three. Has been demonstrated to to the director's satisfaction. That it is built to equivalent fire and life safety standards.
So you're talking about a slight reorder to the way in which this reads, cause.
Some of that, yes.
Okay, I see what you're saying.
But but preserving, preserving the possibility of a third-party inspector. Who would still have to convince you. But but not requiring it if the manufacturer certifies it.
Have you run in, or you haven't had enough experience probably.
We have two examples.
Yeah, two examples is not the whole show, but does somebody. Does somebody actually build these things and not have ANSI certification?
Not through the, not through the two that we've talked to.
I can't fathom that you would set up a whole manufacturing.
No, but I have seen.
Company and not not meet the code.
I have seen private parties build their own.
Build their own, then you would need the third-party.
Yeah, that stuff is usually on TV, like off-the-grid stuff like. Here, we're talking about something that still resides within, I think that that basically carves out any of the examples that you're talking about. Any of those, any of those scenarios that exist where it's like pie in the sky types of scenarios, oh my gosh, look at this thing, it's got this. Is it, does it meet the ANSI standards? Well, you're like, then it's not coming in, it's not coming into Ojai.
What's that, yeah?
Right, so I think there's, there is that that exists, and certainly it's out there, and those probably are some of the more extreme pieces. Um, we're looking at just industrial standard. Working within those those standards and guidelines.
Yeah, well, we have it in our definition that it meets ANSI standards, so.
Yeah, no, absolutely.
Can I take you in another direction? Have we beaten this thing to death yet?
You're in discussion.
I'd get a point of clarity, but go ahead.
Oh, if you want to get a point of clarity on this same subject, go for it.
Well, it is the same, so it's just not related to the um, the third-party inspection. But I'm just want to clarify what we're being asked here to do tonight is to try to remove barriers. And we, obviously, we addressed the first one, and then the second one is allowing them on. Public assembly buildings or, yeah, allowing it at public assembly building or property. Yeah, okay, so it's just those two things that we're kind of.
Those are the two big pieces. And then the last one is on the subject of faith-based organization sites. There's the, so one of the metrics that that's been applied here as a proposal is lock coverage. And using lock coverage as that end-all be-all. Now, there's other metrics that you could use to put a lid on it, to cap it. Where it can be this, but still can't exceed this, you know what I mean, like some sort of. Um, I don't see that as as adding red tape, I, because right now, there is no, there is no tape. It's basically identifying, it's a yes with an asterix. With these, with these parameters that that would then exist. Does that make sense? Cause right now, we've got a lock coverage built into it.
Yeah, where's that, where's the?
Where is that?
There is it indeed.
See short-term rent.
Hold on. I thought I had a percentage built into this, but let me just look.
I don't think so.
It's all, it's all under, it's all under subsection M. That's the entirety of what applies to movable tiny houses, right?
Yeah, I see the square footage, four hundred and forty square feet, that's maximum.
And minimum one hundred and fifty. That's on page eleven.
So I would assume anything over four hundred and forty square feet would be like a, that'd just be like a mobile home, right, something like that.
Well, it's something else.
They're all mobile homes, I guess, one's the tiny one and one's the bigger one.
Well, the difference here is you can't have, you can't have a normal ADU that's only a hundred and fifty square feet.
Okay, here's, it's it's on page fourteen of nineteen. So on fourteen of nineteen, there's a new um, Roman numeral, which is Roman numeral thirteen, which says site coverage. Moveable tiny houses located on a public im- assembly use site shall be limited to a maximum lock coverage of eight percent.
That's just the movable tiny houses part of it. There is no requirement in the residential zone. Of eight percent or any other number.
Correct, that is, that is carved out specific for. The public assembly.
Oh, I see, so coverage movable tiny, loaded, public assembly use site shall be limited maximum lock. That's cool, so that basically restricts them from doing like a, like a tiny home park.
Right, that's that's basically, well, here's, here's the thing, it's meant to be a starting point for discussion. There's a bunch of different ways in which you, you could potentially, you could go with this, you could put a cap on the number. Not to exceed, you know, X. You could put a cap on the distance from each one.
If it's other kinds of.
How much space around it, you mean?
We already have rules about maximum number of dwelling units per acre. We could do it that way.
Could, you could. But I don't think it, do we have a, hold on, let me, let me look to see if we have that for IR three, IR one and PL. Just hold on one second.
I'm still concerned about your restriction of this to faith-based organizations. Because there are a lot of nonprofits. And private parties that are not faith-based organizations that may want to do this.
But are they zoned IR one?
I don't know. Maybe they're IR two, that's not even on the list right now.
Yeah.
PL is on the list. Uh, but PL is not just churches either.
So your concern, I'll let Tais respond or.
I, I'm concerned that you're constructing a barrier by inserting the phrase public assembly areas or faith-based organizations or whatever variant you want to use.
Just a note that the subsection that adds the public assembly building use um, does not narrow that to religious only.
Actually, there was something in here.
Gives religious assemblies as an example.
Oh, you're right, it does.
On page eleven, it does not say faith-based. Is faith-based not in this packet somewhere?
No, it says religious.
I'm sorry, what were you saying? I'm looking up something, but I, I have a, I have a feeling that I should have been paying attention.
Religious assemblies is an example.
Those are examples.
It is, yes. I use that as an exam, where was that definition at again?
But if the YMCA were here in town.
Sure.
And they had some acreage. They're not.
Aren't they faith-based?
According to the name, but they're not necessarily.
Right, located in the PL.
Buys a church.
Yeah, we've had that. We've had that happen already.
And we've also had a church.
Hold on, let's, let's, let's stay focused here. I, I have, let's read the definition, huh? Because these are two definitions that are brand new. I mean, the sticker's still on them, right? We can still return them. Uh, a public assembly building means a use or indoor facility located in the PL, IR one or IR three zones that provides for gathering of more than ten people on a regular or intermittent basis whereby the purposes of the use or facility is to provide a location for meetings or congregation for those people so assembled. For example, religious assembly. So you are, I have been basically earmarking it for public assembly, but the definition itself is broader than that.
By that definition, it sounds like it could be a yoga studio, sir, in the commercial zone.
Right, because it has more than ten people on a regular or.
Or intermittent basis for some particular purpose. But you've limited it to PL, IR, IR one and IR three.
Yeah, so it's still that two-tier piece.
Yeah.
In terms of what we're looking at, so it's, it's expanding the use beyond, it's expanding tiny home, tiny houses, mo- movable tiny houses beyond just the residential. It's saying, okay, why not look at PL, IR one, IR three?
Why don't you just put a period after that?
Well, my question to Booy, why would, why would you look at just those zones?
That gets back to council direction, which was to look at faith-based organization sites. That's, that's really, so when we did that, it was, okay, so we recognize that there's these sites. Let's use this as an example, but also recognize, when this, when this definition was created, it was using a number of public assembly building definitions. So when we don't have a definition or the definition isn't clear, I think I've talked about this with this body before. Um, APA, APA, which is the American Planning Association, has a def, has a dictionary. A dictionary that uses and compiles a bunch of different definitions from other cities throughout the lower forty-eight. And, um, what happens there is, in this case, there was a number of public assembly building definitions that we could use. And what we did is we stitched together based on what was said by council and directed by council to take a look at.
You're trying to limit it.
Bake it, bake it into this.
But you, you don't want it to be showing up in a commercial zone or a manufacturing zone.
Well, the question for discussion is, is yeah, does it, does, does it live within just the parameters of what um, council had, had kind of given that direction, take a look at this. Is there other opportunities? I mean, you gotta remember, when I, when I brought this forward to city council, we talked about it for this long. And then they said, you know, go take a look at it and bring something back, but make sure you go through the process.
Got it.
So.
Well, we're doing.
That's why we're here.
I mean, I, I'm, I'm comfortable if you just said, uh, PL, IR one, uh, IR three zones, period, and just took out the gathering of more and the example religious, you know, I mean, there's no reason to narrow it down to just faith-based organizations.
Well, faith-based is just an example.
Just an example.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know what we have.
It is, but, but a lot, a lot of times, and Matt reminds me of this on a regular basis, that the code is not the sum of one definition, but a sum of the whole. So when you look at that definition, you're like, okay, so how does this apply to everything else that's going on within this section of the code? And living within some of these parameters that have been identified here helps to shape the rest of it. If you limit that, you can absolutely limit it. It then begins to limit the, the types of uses that it could, that it could foster. That could, that could live within it, meaning yes to the zones, but then are we, are we then still addressing the use? Or is the zones going to be, going to be dictated by how much land is available?
All, there's lots of other land uses in those zones.
I know, there are, yes, within the PL and the IR.
You're limiting it to this kind of land use in these three specific zones.
Yeah, because you were looking at the scope of expansion to these three zones. And then.
Limiting the usage to just.
And the reason why these three zones were picked is because these are the three zones that have faith-based organizations. Right?
But faith-based organizations was specific direction from city council.
Correct, to look at, explore, and that's what we're doing.
To start.
But it didn't mean that we had to limit it to just that.
If there's other opportunities, then we can.
John, you can, you can always find another possibility.
What were the three, what were the three keys? It wasn't, how can we remove barriers?
Yeah, I know.
It wasn't how we can add barriers, how can we remove barriers?
Could we look at page, um, ten of attachment A, going back to the beginning of this and the purpose? And look at that second purpose, which is ensure that movable tiny houses are in harmony with developed neighborhoods. All I've been hearing since.
Compatible with the character? Oh, in harmony, okay, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Right.
That is as subjective a sentence as I have ever come across. And since I've been here for a year and I've been hearing about how we're supposed to do everything with objective standards, I just wondered how that one got in there.
That's one of those prior, prior to the requirement for objective standards.
Okay, okay.
Was the code.
I, I understand where the, the intention is, is leading us.
Well, harmony and music is very objective.
I think Tais wants to say.
The meaning of this is.
I, I would say, in my view, and maybe you have a different view of this, Lucas, but these are not standards. These are kind of general.
Goals.
Goals, yeah.
Aspirational language.
Okay.
I agree, I think it helps to frame the conversation, but it's not something where I'm looking at it and I'm saying, it doesn't meet the purpose. Doesn't meet the purpose, but I would say this, I would say this, if, um, if I can give an extreme case. Uh, okay, let's say, for instance, there was twenty tiny homes that were looking to be built on the edge of a single-family residential site. And those twenty tiny homes were right next to each other and they all looked like candy canes. Does that ensure that the movable tiny homes are in harmony with the developed neighborhood? Does that meet the purpose? I begin to question that. Now, it's not, it's not objective.
Safety regulations.
But it certainly begins to, it begins to certain, it begins to frame the context of yes to, yes to mo- to movable tiny homes, no to a design that is just egregious. It doesn't say that in here. We've just come up with a subjective way in which to address a design concern. I mean, I'm giving this off-the-wall or off-the-shelf example.
This is a question, can you, using this, and run the, uh, R two definitions in terms of what can be put on a piece of property? There's the quantity of, of units or, um.
Unpacked, what do you mean by that? Do you, do you mean the number of units could then be increased?
Could be increased because they're, because they qualify as tiny homes.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Uh, okay, so in turn, okay, so let's just use the R two as an example.
Right.
Um, R two is already an area that they're allowed. If we apply the eight percent rule, um, right, isn't that what it, eight percent? Okay, okay, yes, site coverage. Movable tiny houses located on a, oh, it does say public assembly. Let's remove public assembly just for the fun of it. And say, shall be limited to a maximum lot coverage of eight percent. That is stricter than what we already have within our code. Our code typically is thirty, thirty-five percent. So already that begins to work in an opposite direction. Um, this eight percent was built on looking at those nine sites that we were just looking at. So it's, it's really specific, but you could start looking at it from the standpoint of if we're going to provide a ceiling for these on R two sites, that could be done in, in a two-pronged approach still, where you address it through a lot coverage and you address it through a not to exceed. So then that begins to dictate the number of units based on the size of the lot and the available, the available land. So if it's already, okay, so an R two, I don't have an example, but I could bring back an example for the R two just for the fun of it. Um, and to help kind of inform the conversation as we're working through this. An R two, that's two acres in, in size. Let's say it's an acre in size, all right, and it's got four units on it. And those units are occupying ten percent, right? It's two stories. They're got, it's a fourplex, right? Been working great for years. And they're like, hey, how many more of these units can we add? Given the parameters that magically exist here and the percentages are fifty percent. R two has a little bit more leniency with the lot coverage. I don't have the, the standards in front of me, but there are more. Suddenly, and then I'll give the ADU example, suddenly four tiny homes can go on there. Let's just use that as an example. Four additional tiny homes can be placed and sited on the, on the property and still meet the parameters that we've just discussed. Let's just say that happens to be the case. If we shift to, um, ADUs in multi-family, which R two is multi-family, you can have two ADUs. You can cite two ADUs on top of what are already there. And you can do it in a number of different ways.
On top of the family building.
Correct. Whether that be, ends up being on the site, they give all kinds of little weird creative ways. You can use, it's kind of weird to say, but you can use like an industrial or utility closet and convert that over to, they use that as an example within state, state law, which is very weird, and I don't know why they did that. There must have been a, a specific example where they saw it in another city and they're saying, we should be able, they should be able to do that. Or someone came to, came, came to them and said, we should be able to do that. You're like, yeah, that's right. Let's bake it into the code. That's, that's the kind of stuff that we're looking at here. Two for ADUs, that's across, that's period, that's going on right now. We've had that happen in the R twos. Versus tiny homes, which really doesn't, I mean, the ceiling right now is one.
It's one because it's an ADU?
If they end up, no, hold on. If these code, this code right now, if they put a tiny home on an R two where they already have four units and they put a tiny home on there, the way this code reads is you cannot do ADUs. You can do one or the other. Not both. So you can do one tiny home or you can do two ADUs. If I'm looking to increase the number of units, I'm not going to do the one tiny home.
You're saying a tiny.
I'm going to do the two units.
Tiny home is not an ADU?
No, a tiny home is an ADU.
It is an ADU.
By, by the, by the strict standard of.
But you can't put two of them.
Correct.
Because it's not an ADU.
No, it is. It is an ADU in terms of how it qualifies within our code. So in terms of those standards, it's an ADU. But then those standards, um, branch off into its own unique little beast. And that's what we've been talking about tonight.
And, and the issue that I'm, I'm dealing with may not be a, an OHI issue at the moment. But if you were to read any journal of sociology, you'd see the collapse of churches and, uh, you go to Los Angeles and there's churches are dropping, are falling like flies. And so there's re, there's reuse of church buildings and parking lots.
Repurposing this property, yeah.
Yeah, so, so the issue, um, is, for me, is the tiny home a way in which somebody could develop a church property in an R two zone? Not, not that any of our churches are in an R two zone, I don't know, but, um, and be able to put more um, units on the site than would be allowable, um, were it not for the tiny home exemption. There is. Yeah, I think that's. That's a question. It's a question because I had a question mark at the end of it.
Put more units, they would be able to put more units.
You can say you've just made a statement rather than.
Yeah, I think it's a good, I think that's a good statement. I, I don't know how to respond to that other than, yes, you're right, yeah, it makes sense.
All right.
Back on, back on page twelve, it talks about section ten-two, four oh two, which is the, the residential zone, zones, and ten-two, six oh three, special purpose zones. Refers specifically back to page seventeen and the table there, which says you can have movable tiny house, this is proposed, I agree. You can have movable tiny houses in PL, but not in OS and not in AG. Whatever happened to farmworker housing?
It's SOAR, you can't build on SOAR. They have our agricultural resources. Those are agricultural lands. You can't build on.
You can, uh, well.
You can have, you can have caretaker employee quarters with a CUP. You can have farmworker housing.
That's workforce housing.
CUP. But you can't have a movable tiny home that one of your farmworkers lives in?
I don't know if that qualifies as a farmworking home. I don't know. I don't know what the definition, what qualifies as a farmworking housing. That I don't know.
I don't know, but I don't know why a movable tiny house couldn't be occupied by a farmworker or a caretaker.
Just what the definition of farmworker housing is.
Just trying to make things internally consistent, sir.
Yeah.
And I, and I don't understand that one. Understand open space, although you can have farmworker housing in open space.
So let's, hold on, let's get back to, remember the, you're, you're branching off beyond what, what the initial three.
I'm trying to help remove barriers here.
I know, well, barriers with an asterix, obvious, for obvious reasons, because if not, then we're, uh, we're like the universe ever-expanding, right? And what we're trying to do here is to, to ratchet it down to really kind of the, the playbook in which council had given, um, staff to, to take forward, which is the, the faith-based organizational sites, um, looking at expanding it into other zones and then, um, some of the standards that would then apply. This is our first cut, but I also recognize that you're looking at, well, why not this or why not, why not this?
And, and I understand, a- and we've talked about some procedural barriers that I think we probably all agree should be eliminated.
That took some time to, to get there, but I, I think we're all kind of on the same page.
This is a standards barrier.
Yeah. Here's, here's my.
R two and the, and the AG. Well, I don't know about R two.
How many AG lo- locations do we have in the city? I can think of one.
In principle, it doesn't matter.
Well, but we've got to look at.
We've allowed four other. We've allowed four other, actually, we have six other categories of residential uses that are allowed either permitted or with a CUP in AG land, but not movable tiny homes.
Right. It's a fair, I mean, it's a fair point.
It feels like a barrier.
I had to look at then the rationale on whether or not that would be productive. Meaning, how many sites?
We're looking at results-based decisions now rather than principle-based?
Opportunity-based. At some point, ADUs are going to no longer be, we're going to start seeing a downward trend. Right now, our trend is upward. Like anything, we're going to start seeing a plateau, and then we're going to start seeing a downward trend of the ADUs. We're not the size of a city that's going to have it go on forever. We're a four-point.
Sure.
Everybody says we're what, four point two square miles?
Sometime the market will saturate.
Sometime, either the market will saturate, or you'll just run out of room.
Every house will have one.
Well, it's either a fear or a statement that everyone is getting on board with, or at least most people. In terms of the open space or even the agricultural zones in terms of exploring that, if you want, I can bring back a discussion on that, and we can have that deliberation as well. But I think it's only two sites that we have that are AG. And those sites have got a lot of terrain that they have to deal with. And one of them.
I'm not questioning that.
Okay.
What I'm saying is, whatever AG land we have, it's already okay to build caretaker quarters. It's already okay to build farmworker housing. It's already okay to build a guest house.
Right.
Or a second residential unit.
That is permitted.
Which sort of presumes there's a first residential unit on this AG land.
Primary, yeah.
But not a movable tiny house. I'm not saying that I'm in favor of them anywhere, but this is not consistent.
So I got a question on that too. On page eighteen of nineteen, we have it for R1 and R3, but we don't have it for R2?
IR2.
IR2.
Correct.
What's in IR2?
Jinx. What you have in IR2 is you have the high school. So a high school is an IR2, and so is.
Faculty housing.
And so is the, oh, that's interesting. And so is the hospital. Hospital is IR2 as well.
Workforce housing.
To be fair, the hospitals side, I mean, if you look at it, it's pretty tight.
It's not very flat.
It is not, not on the backside, certainly.
Yeah, yeah.
But if we allow them on parking lots, just a thought. Going back to your definition.
Not going to kill parking.
Well, parking lots with an asterisk.
The hospital doesn't have a lot of parking.
On, on page fourteen of nineteen, where we have the site coverage and we're saying maximum lot coverage of eight percent. Like, I was just, you know, just doing fuzzy math, but if you look at like the Church of Latter Day Saints, they have a square footage lot of one hundred and six thousand two eighty-six, so eight percent of that is eight thousand five oh two, so that would be twenty-one tiny homes?
Yep.
That's a lot. I don't know.
I know. It's about one every eleven thousand square feet is basically what it boils down to.
Quite a bit.
I suspect the city would go crazy if it was anything like that.
It's a number that's been thrown out. It's not something that I'm necessarily married to.
Okay, all right, all right. So we could put like a unit map on there.
You're proposing to allow this in IR1 and IR3, but not all of IR1 and IR3?
Correct.
It has to be a faith-based organization.
No, that was an example.
It was an example.
I'm sorry, it has to be a public assembly building.
It has to be a public assembly building.
Yep.
And then it's got to meet those parameters within that definition we were just reading. And mind you.
The farmhouse at the inn where they have culinary classes regularly. Is that a public assembly building?
Well, hold on. Let's read the definition. Hold on. Means a use or indoor facility located in the PL IR1 or IR3, so it's zoned as IR3. Okay, so it meets that test. That provides for gatherings of more than ten people on a regular basis or intermittent basis. Check. Whereby the purposes of the use or facility is to provide a location for meetings or congregation, so it's an either or, for those people so assembled.
Check.
So they could do it.
And then I give the example, religious assemblies. So the example isn't necessarily the end-all be-all.
The example is not a limit, it's an example.
If you fold that into the definition, it changes the whole definition, but right now it says example religious assembly. So your question, your question, as we use it as an example, in that location, could that be done given this definition? And the answer I would say is yes.
And we're back to whether the naming of specific zones is in itself a barrier. And I know we're not supposed to talk about specific parcels or things like this, but in this case, I don't have any better example. We had a case before us some years ago of an establishment at the corner of Bryant Street and Ojai Avenue. Used to be a gas station, it's now a yoga studio. There's a big parking lot out back. As a yoga studio, does it constitute a public assembly building? I would contend that under this definition it does.
But does the zoning allow for it? The zoning is C1.
The zoning is C1. So why is C1 not in that list?
It gets back to the original question. Remember the three points?
Okay, so we can enforce any set of rules the city council sets. That's not the question.
I can think of a couple of sites that are C1 where they're vacant or there's an opportunity for tiny homes, but.
Oh, there's a one-acre parcel I can think of right now on East Ojai Avenue. Has been there for years. There's the 1202, which we're going to hear other things about sometime soon. The old bowling alley property. You could put a mess of tiny houses on that.
Certainly could.
Oh, that's not the current concept, at least not that I've heard.
It is not.
But that's another C1 property.
Yeah, but I think.
That otherwise could meet this definition.
I think the ask is, hey, let's remove barriers and let's consider.
Let's remove barriers for faith-based organizations.
But let's consider these zones, not necessarily faith-based, but let's consider these zones. But we can always expand it additionally in the future. This is just one aspect of it. We can also say, hey, this was very successful in the publics, in the public buildings, let's expand it to the C1 zone. Let's expand it to commercial.
Yes. Vice Chair Trent, you're making a good point. Here's what I would also offer. This is, these parameters were put on for a purpose, because you could talk about this for quite some time.
I'm worried about that.
Focusing on the tasks at hand, if we open the parameters to other zones, I mean, I'm open to looking into that. I just want to understand what the context of that would be and some of the purpose. Because that'll help me frame how we address those conversations moving forward.
I think this list on page eleven that lists three zones, hidden between the lines is the phrase, because that's where we found faith-based organizations. Would you agree?
If you look at the way in which this is written, the examples that we're using either have public assembly and then identify themselves as faith-based organizations somewhere within the definition. I mean, obviously, I took that, and instead of baking it into the definition, I added it at the end as an example.
As an example, but the example is not a limiting example. If this language were added to the code, anyone in the PL zone who provides a gathering of more than ten people or whatever, all the rest of that, or the IR1 or the IR3 would not be barred from putting tiny houses in.
Remember, this isn't meant to be the final version where we pick apart like two or three pieces.
Agree we need to talk more.
We could literally rewrite this definition a number of different ways. This was kind of the starting point.
Yeah, I guess a good question too is.
Sparked some conversations.
I think something that we need to look at is what is in the PL and the IR1 and the IR3 zones? Do we have other things outside of just faith-based? It sounds like we do with the church.
Absolutely.
PL has schools and government offices for starters.
Yeah, and obviously the Ohio Valley Inn was in there. So I think we need to go back to council and say, hey, do we want to just limit this to church, faith-based church, you know, churches, or do we want to also allow like the inn to do it?
I would say no to going back to council.
Faith-based written into the code.
Right. Do we want faith-based written into the code?
The answer is going to be no.
Do we want faith-based written into the code?
That wasn't my direction. The general direction was to look at faith-based organization. It's basically church sites essentially.
A starting place.
But it's not the end-all be-all. This is, remember, it was a discussion piece.
I know. And I know city council wants to expand it, but their intent by expanding it, do they want to just limit it to these faith-based organizations?
Let's make sure it's a defensible basis for the expansion.
Right, yeah.
Well, we can build a defensible.
Because for example, if the Ohio Valley Inn says, ooh, this is a great opportunity for us to build workforce housing, and then it goes in front of city council, and city council says, no, you can't do that. Oh, well, you have it right here in your code. Well, I guess you can.
Right.
We don't want to get into that situation.
And you got lawsuits flying all over the place.
But, well, this has been very enlightening. Seriously, this, and I haven't, I haven't seen anything in here that prohibits doing the kind of manufacturing that Mr. Miley was talking about, except the word movable.
Right. You can.
Should there be some other piece of 10-21709 that says not movable, immovable tiny homes?
Well, I thought there was something in here that allowed it to be on chassis or on foundation.
Yeah, it just says it has to be.
Yeah, but you have to tow it there and then put it on the foundation.
Right.
And the manufactured housing is not going to be licensed by the DMV.
Right, the tow, the trailer would be, but.
If you, but that's another whole subject. I mean, this is just addressing movable tiny houses. You can build a tiny house and bring it, like Jamie said, on a truck and put the crane to work.
Well, I guess you can.
Placing it.
Well, I'm uncertain about that. I'm not sure. I'm uncertain about it. I'm concerned about it. I would think that we would want not to discourage people from doing manufactured housing, bringing it in on a flatbed and setting it down. In particular, if it looks different than a mobile home.
Right.
And I'm just worried that this stuff is going to read to the eye, a mobile home, because it's trying to.
It's just a small mobile home. It is a mobile home.
Yes, it is a small one. It's a small one. But the other thing is, we don't want that manufactured housing necessarily in 10-21709, because that's accessory dwelling units. And I think there would be people who would argue that manufactured homes should be allowed as primary dwelling units, not just accessory dwelling.
That is an interesting statement you just made there, Chair Qualisi, because I believe that.
Maybe that's already allowed.
And Kyla talked about that for probably an hour, whether or not we literally take this entire section of the code and create a whole new section that just addresses the tiny homes. This was our first blush, instead of taking the whole thing out and applying it to its own section. And by having its own section, it begins to live organically in its own world and no longer is considered in any part of the imagination as an ADU, but is now holy and standing on its own wheels.
That'd be a good idea.
Well, it's ANSI standards because it's movable. If it's manufactured housing, and he could probably clarify this, I bet it's not built to ANSI standards. It's probably built to some other set of standards. And is that the California Building Standards Code, or is it something else? At this point, it doesn't matter. But is that another category of buildings?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, there's a few of them. Well, it doesn't qualify as an ADU. I don't know. Does it qualify as an ADU?
Why wouldn't it?
I don't know.
If it's a primary, then yes, it could.
It could. Okay, well, there you go.
If it's, if there is a primary.
There has to be a primary.
Could I have a mobile home as an ADU? Like one that's in a mobile home park, but I can put it in my house, put it on my property?
It would need to be designed, so there would have to be some design pieces that would be added to it to dress it up.
Right now, there's size limits on here, and you still have to.
What's the size limit for an ADU maximum?
Between a hundred.
Maximum? It can be up to twelve hundred square feet.
Between four hundred and forty and twelve hundred, I think.
So I could get a twelve hundred square foot mobile home and put it on my driveway.
Double wide in your backyard.
Yeah, double wide in my backyard, exactly.
If I put a different skin on it, so it looks like a house, that becomes a very large movable tiny home.
Tiny home, tiny homes have square footage limitations. Yeah.
They have square footage limits in here. Are they, are those same limits in state law, or is that just something that we did?
There is no state law on tiny homes.
Okay, so that's a local option.
It is.
And the difference between, I think, between a mobile home and a movable tiny house is one, right now, the size, but two, what it looks like from the outside.
Yeah, that's.
I think those are the two biggest pieces.
And, and. We did have one develop. The difference between those two and a manufactured house is the manufactured house didn't come in on wheels.
Right, it's trained in, yeah.
We did have one, I don't know if we're allowed to talk about this. One person, one developer came in with a project, which was going to take a strip of land and put a bunch of, I don't mean to make that sound.
Manufactured homes on it.
Negative, but there were going to be a twenty manufactured homes.
Like a mobile home park.
It was like a mobile home park. Except they were all not on wheels.
Right, manufactured homes.
Manufactured homes. I think we may see that again, gentlemen.
Remind me of, okay, don't remind me. We're not allowed to talk about that. Tyce is going to get mad at me.
Just, just look at me. You will know. Okay.
I think.
Anything else? I think we've talked about this.
But I also think it deserves more discussion.
Yeah, so let me do a couple of things here, just so that we can kind of frame this productive discussion. I am going to come back with differences between apartments and tiny homes in terms of size, pricing, if I can get that.
Construction cost per square foot.
Include mobile homes in there too?
Why?
Because those could technically be a tiny home.
If it's the right size.
It's the right size.
I'm okay with adding in mobile homes for the discussion. That way, it's a comparative analysis. And pre-manufactured, so it wouldn't necessarily be on.
On wheels.
Right? Okay. Let me do those four. I think that's an important distinction that way, because those are the things that we're hearing about on a regular basis.
Yeah.
And let's see what really comes out of it, and you know, if it is apples to apples, or if there is some oranges and some rotten fruit mixed in there, right? Okay, let me just write that down.
Ojai is nothing if not eclectic.
You're saying.
It is. I, there's a lot of truth to that.
Amen.
I think there's a separate category called off-site manufactured housing.
Well, now, before we get too far with that phrase, that's a fifty, a fifty-unit apartment complex that we just approved.
That is gonna be mostly that.
Where all the pieces are manufactured off-site and brought in on trailers or cranes or something and dropped in place.
Yeah, they're, um, they're containers.
I thought they were tilted.
No, they're, they're containers.
They're, they're modu- it's modular housing. Twelve-foot wide modules.
Think of like, you know, the containers that.
That, we just approved one of those.
All right, I'm gonna jump again. Tyce is gonna tell you to stop.
Yeah, let's keep it on.
Way too far off topic. Okay.
Just a question, and then on, uh, on the definition for item three, II three, or, uh, page eleven nineteen where we talk about the zones. So just, uh, provide a little bit of clarity on that, or a little bit of more.
Yeah.
Which page?
Ten, ten and eleven.
Page eleven.
Yeah, a little more clarity.
Ten and eleven, the definitions.
Definition.
Okay.
When you list the zones and we talk about religious assembly.
All right.
A little more clarity on the specifics on that.
Are we, because this is a discussion.
Cool.
Yeah.
All right.
Uh, just so you know, when this comes back, it will not be coming back with a resolution, because there's more discussion.
No, it's more discussion. Yeah, amen. All right, let's go on to item five, future agenda items.
Okay, so, guess what? Because we, um, were able to get all the items on for, for tonight, we do not have any items that are pending. We do have items that are out there, but two of the items, um, ended up needing additional information, so there's, there's incomplete letters that went out to them. So they're not ready. So what that means is that we're looking at canceling December twentieth. Um, I would put a question mark by the third, but I'll just be, I'm gonna be blunt. I probably won't have enough staff to get, enough staff to get an agenda out for the third, to be fair. We're gonna have, we're gonna have bare bones for the holiday season for obvious reasons. Um.
But you only have two things in the pipeline anyway.
Well, two that we're showing. I mean, the reality is, is Mara's got probably twenty projects that she's working on right now, close to that, that are on various stages.
Well, I say that she should not enjoy the holidays and she should get something.
I, uh, look, if, if they're ready to go, we'll find a way to get the, the third, but the reality is, is that I don't see any items ready until the second, beginning of January.
We're past the noticing requirement for something on the twentieth anyway.
We are. We're beyond that, and there's no items that we.
How about this as a compromise? Let's, uh, how about we cancel the twentieth? We don't yet cancel the third, and we will wait to hear from staff as to whether there's anything available for the third, and if there is not, then we could do an email vote, or however you wanna do that.
Tyce, can we do an email vote?
And make a decision on the third. Is that legal?
We don't need to do an email vote, Chair, if you decide to take something off the agenda, or, or.
Or cancel.
Just decides to cancel.
Oh, okay. All right.
That doesn't require a majority of the commission. I'm just, what I'm doing, and the reason why we put this on here is just to, to make you aware that there, while we have items that are definitely out there.
There's lots in the pipeline, but nothing ready to consider.
Yeah, I think we've done a good job at this point of, of making sure everything lines up. A year and a half or two years ago, we were talking about, um, the log jams.
We had extra meetings.
We did. We did do a lot of special meetings to, to catch up, so. Yeah, yeah, and we appreciate it certainly.
Well, I am, I am okay with canceling both of those. I don't think we need to vote.
I'm okay with canceling both of them unless some.
Unless something comes up.
Unless staff comes back and says, hey, one is all of a sudden ready to go for the third.
Yeah.
We're, we're past the twentieth.
Yeah, yeah.
But if something's ready to go for the third, then we'll meet.
Then we go.
And if not, we won't.
Yep.
Right.
Sounds good. Sounds fair. Okay.
Terrific.
Not sure that I feel horribly, uh, okay with that, but yeah, here we are. I'm okay with that.
Okay, good.
No pressure.
No pressure.
Okay, directors report?
Um, I, oh, I hate saying this right now, but I'm gonna have to make the announcement. The, so Kyla is leaving us. She is going to Santa Clarita, unfortunately.
That was quick.
Which happens to be where she lives, so.
Well, that's a big deal.
She ended up finding a.
An hour's drive.
Yeah, I mean, she was commuting every day, and I hate to see her leave.
For her.
Uh, and she was, she was gonna present tonight, but I said, I'm just going to do it.
She's on the bigger, bigger thing.
Hey, cause tonight was gonna be the introduction. I was gonna introduce you to her, but I'm like, eh.
I just met her the other day, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, so, but we are recruiting right now, and we have interviews coming up, so I'm, and we have a lot of really good candidates, so I'm excited about that. Uh, when I was reporting last time, I wasn't too excited about it. But I'm excited now, because we've got some candidates out there that were, that are promising, and I'm, I'm excited about, so hopefully we can, we can snag one of them. So, anyway, that's, that's my report for right now.
Um, I know this is, uh, not, well, it's sort of related. Any movement on city manager front?
I can't talk about that.
Oh, okay.
But you can stay tuned to city council, cause I think there'll be some updates.
Okay.
Yep, Tuesday.
Yeah.
Tuesday, you can ask the question.
Our ex, um, city manager is well-loved in part by Amy. They appreciate him a lot.
I can't hear you. Turn on your, can you turn on your mic?
Is your mic on?
Mic's not on.
Oh, yeah, this wasn't for the meeting.
Okay, well, let's, let's finish here. Any commission members report? Okay, city council liaison, uh, as I told Lucas earlier today, I happened to run into the mayor while I was walking this morning, and she said she had another meeting tonight that preempted her being able to join us tonight. And with that, there being no other obvious business before the commission, it is nine thirty-eight, and we're adjourned.